Honorable Mayor and Councilpeople, I'm Chris Hart of 223 Mariposa Street, and I'm speaking tonight as President of San Francisco Trains Incorporated, a nonprofit corporation registered here in Brisbane. We are restoring a 1911 State Belt #4 steam engine on the Baylands by the Roundhouse. Universal Paragon supports our nonprofit by letting us use this space at no charge. Our mission in restoring the engine and preserving the associated railroad artifacts is to educate and inspire and show skills and the machinery used and the probing, solving techniques that our predecessors used. We feel these are all values that should not be forgotten. Though it is beyond our control, the future of the Brisbane Bay Shore Roundhouse is a major concern for us because it is the single strongest link to the past that literally built Brisbane. It is the only building in Brisbane listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and it seems largely lost in the huge and complicated Brisbane Baylands development discussions. We very much appreciate the city speaking in favor of protecting the Roundhouse. However, since there is no requirement to proceed with specific steps to preserve it and then restore it, we are concerned that it will continue to deteriorate further over what could be many more years of extended debate. We don't know yet of an angel donor, an agency, or a national-level preservation fund that would commit to rebuilding the Roundhouse. We know it could be a centerpiece of a railroad museum complex and would be a unique contribution to Brisbane and be the start of creating a great legacy to our future generations. The Brisbane Bay Shore Roundhouse is one of only three Southern Pacific Railroad Roundhouses left in the United States. It's the only standing brick roundhouse in the state of California. Next to it is the Tank and Boiler Shop, currently occupied by Lazare Fuels. And while not as unique, it still has historic features unadulterated since the workers left there in the 1960s when they closed that particular shop. The rail yard complex supported the lives of many hundreds of families in Visitation Valley, Brisbane, and South San Francisco over generations, from 1917 until 1982, when the Southern Pacific laid off that staff. In 1953, 1,400 workers were employed and the yearly payroll was $5,733,000. That's $1,953. Many crowds were required; they were all highly skilled. Machinists and the mechanics learned onsite and through correspondence schools. In the train yard, switchmen and conductors learned the complicated linear organization of incoming rail cars to deliver them to sidings and then building the next train out. The car shop workers were re-reeling the coaches that carried the commuters, tourists, and the business travelers. Their skill and level of workmanship was the top of the industry. In today's world, pre-cycling and sustainability are best management practices. You'd be surprised to learn how far ahead of their time the railroads were in some ways before those words were even coined. First off, everything was fixed. Parts were made onsite if needed. Heavy frames would be welded and machined back to dimensions. Worn-out flues could be hammered into, made into new ones by replacing the ends. And if they were too worn, they could be turned into signposts or fenceposts. Railroad workers who lived in Brisbane were known to bring home wooden box car siding for use in building their houses. Recycling was a way of life for them; they didn't condone waste. But of all these elements, the trade skills, the inventiveness, the reuse, the self-improvement is a legacy of the railroad workers. What these men and women did here should impress upon you the importance of that culture. They were the beating heart of the rail yard, which was essential to the growth of the whole San Francisco Bay Area. Workers formed social groups, including baseball teams, bowling teams, and even a glee club. When viewed today, these buildings, especially the Roundhouse vandalized and partly burned, the average person might simply turn away and expect them to be replaced by some glass offices or predictable chain stores. I know that you and many more appreciate a far more ambitious vision, one which demonstrates our respect for the past and our predecessors, one which preserves the rare building and history, one where essential skills are preserved, remembered, and taught. Let's take a quick look around some other communities that have chosen to do, what they've chosen to do with similar properties around the U.S. and Canada. Imagine our Bay Shore Roundhouse as a shining star in the Baylands. Imagine the value to our children and the future generations if it is reborn as accommodation, museum, cultural center, a star attraction, a place where you'll want to go back to see over and over, a place where San Francisco tourists will want to add to their list of must-see museums. San Francisco generates billions in the tourist revenues annually, and Brisbane sits well-positioned on the transit hub between San Francisco and the airport. A new Brisbane Bay Shore Railroad Roundhouse Museum would become a destination on the tourist circuit. Kids love trains, and in that magic age of three to five, or forever for some of us, kids love trains. So there's a steady, there's a steady flow of new and repeat visitors every year. I've watched this over the years, as you see the children and the parents coming to the museums, and then the next generation coming, and more coming the next year. Worldwide, some railroad museums have proven successful. The well-planned ones do make money. As needed, a steady flow of visitors, blending attractions, such as a miniature train, scale model displays, first-class food, drink, and entertainment, and private or corporate venue rentals. That's the economic side of it. The social side, the social equity of knowledge can be shared through offering lecture series, demonstrations of machines, hands-on volunteering, or working vocation courses. So the keys to the success of this potential project we are advocating include to have enough open space around the Roundhouse to minimize traffic noise while maximizing the view. A track connection to the main line would serve as both a, for both the future construction needs of the Baylands, as well as provide for special moves of rail cars in and out. Rail cars would be essentially the displays that would be exchanged between museums, and this is the current model in Britain. It's how the museums are kept fresh. Another point is to possibly provide adequate additional space for the development of a convention or meeting center where the revenues would flow to the city and where additional foot traffic would sustain a museum complex. So therefore, we ask to express your desire to make a dream come true right here in Brisbane, prevent the continued destruction of the Bay Shore Roundhouse, allow a process that will turn it into a showcase, and other sources of city pride the same way we feel during the holidays when all the Brisbane stars are on and Santa Claus is riding on the fire truck. Those three key points again are: allow the property owner or an agency to expedite structural stabilization of the Roundhouse and protect it from vandalism or major loss. Another would be to uphold the Planning Commission's recommendations on real-related activities at the Roundhouse. Third is to prevent development from physically cutting off the Roundhouse from any practical future, from any future track connections. We're talking only about a 25-foot-wide easement only for intermittent use, and this would be critical. This would be how the displays would be moved in and out of the, of the train yard, of the museum. That's a really critical part, if it's going to be a future world-class museum that people go out of their way to see. So as a nonprofit with Bay Shore Associated Artifacts, the locomotive under restoration, we have artifacts from the Roundhouse that people consistently give us in the stories. We're in a unique position, I think, to help both the property owner and the city of Brisbane and other agencies with the connections between private donors. If allowed to do so, we can assist with design, planning, fundraising, construction, or operations. We can take this project on as a lead or as an advisory role. Bottom line is, we are here to help with this once in Brisbane's lifetime opportunity. We haven't found that angel donor or aligned various interests yet, but in my 25 years in railroad preservation, I've seen many successes. So on behalf of this organization, I ask you to look positively towards the potential and act in favor of railroad preservation at the Bay Shore Roundhouse and have it in the midst of an economically, ecologically, and socially viable development. So speaking next on our behalf are Edie Epps and Walter Boland. Both of their fathers were machinists for the Southern Pacific Railroad right here at Bay Shore, and they have some firsthand knowledge to share with you. Thank you for your service to our community and for your vision for Brayland's future.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, good evening. My name is Edie Epps. I live up on Tunnel Road. I've been there all my life, so over 60 years. My father worked for Southern Pacific. Picture of him up there. It was the Coast Division of Southern Pacific. And he was very, he was a union machinist and very proud to work for Southern Pacific from 1929 to 1963, probably before some of you were born. I said, as I said, I still live in the same house, and our fourth-generation grandchildren are living with me also. Preserving the history of the site of the Roundhouse would be a dream come true, not for others like me who just adore railroad, but for the future generations like my grandchildren. And, you know, this is for the past, the present, and the future. The history of the trains are being preserved every day, as Chris had said, through their work there with the State Belt and all over California and places he indicated. What could be done here in Brisbane is, in the future of the Roundhouse site, could spark the interests of many residents and non-residents. I hope you'll keep our dream going as this moves, project moves forward. We talk about historical displays, educational programs, interpretive exhibitions, children's activities. What's in store for the Roundhouse is endless. Maybe a Brisbane Roundhouse brew even would be in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have round beer?
Yes.
Honorable Mayor, council members. I bet you guys are glad I've only got one piece of paper.
Can you just speak into the microphone, please?
My name is Walter Boland. I'm a resident of Antioch, California. I'm a member of San Francisco Trains. My father, Fred Boland, that's him up there, was a machinist at the Bay Shore Roundhouse. He worked there 52 years, from 1928 to 1980. Many times as a kid, I went with him to the Bay Shore Shops, as he called it, on his day off for different reasons. And later in life, I used to drive there on my day off to have lunch with him and a few of the other "old timers," as they called themselves. Bay Shore was an important employer in its day. Thousands of people worked there through the years, three shifts, working 24/7, doing everything imaginable to keep a busy railroad running. Steam locomotives, diesels, freight, and passenger cars all repaired there. They had every kind of shop, machine shop, boiler shop, erecting shop, pipe, blacksmith, carpenter, upholstery, you name it. They had men and women of every craft, clerks, secretaries, draftsman. They had switchmen, breakmen, engineers, firemen, machinists, pipe fitters, welders, and blacksmith. It just goes on and on.
Walter, could you move the microphone in front of you?
I beg your pardon, sir. I'm sorry. Okay, well, anyway, you heard all that, I'm sure. They had a lot of people working there. They kept leagues of people employed, including many residents of Brisbane. Bay Shore was more than an abandoned roundhouse to my family. It was Dad's way of life, his home away from home. Even today, when I go there to volunteer at San Francisco Trains, I can still see the busy, vibrant rail facility that once was there. And everywhere I look, I remember Dad. Memories like these are my reason for being here before you tonight. I'm hoping there can be some way of having railroad-related activities at Bay Shore Roundhouse again. I believe it's important, not only for the physical history, but also the lives and the stories of the people who worked there through the years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. So I actually, I meant to mention in the beginning that council questions could be in between each presentation while it's fresh in our minds. So at this point, just if we have any brief questions, since we do have a number of presentations to get to, I want to open that up to the council. Any questions?
You know, I don't have any. Well, you know what, Chris, if you wouldn't mind coming on up. You know, first of all, I just want to thank you, you and the others for their presentation and just the work that you do out at the site. You know, it's great, you know, seeing you now and then out there working, you know, on that locomotive and trying to bring it back to life. You know, some of the pictures that you've shown of other roundhouses in other parts of North America and how they've been revitalized and become, you know, a cultural center, you know, for these areas. I really want to thank you for shining the light on that. And, I mean, of course, you know, we haven't started our deliberations yet, but I just, you know, just for me personally, I mean, I would love to see the Roundhouse come back to life and this area be the cultural hub of the Baylands, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that.
And the presentation, do we have a copy of that so we can get copies? I think you had references of other projects and also ideas for this specific site.
Absolutely. I can come back with more in time you want. And the city clerk has a copy of the slides and the script that I just read for you.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And next we have Creble, Committee for Renewable Energy in the Baylands, Anya Miller.
Good evening, my name is Mayor and Council. I'm Anya Miller, Brisbane resident for 50 years now. Before you today is a team of seven members of the volunteers who represent the Committee for Renewable Energy in the Baylands. Each of them will introduce themselves when they come up. Creble was formed in 2006 and has wide local support. Many of us have participated in all phases of the Baylands' planning process so far. We do have a video here that we'd like to show you.
Everything that we build and everything that we consume, all of it, needs energy. And by using the Brisbane Baylands to generate electricity from solar and wind energy, we really can be sustainable. The Baylands should be something for everybody. Wind power and solar power would be ideal for that site.
It's a large space here on the peninsula. It's in a transportation-centered area. It has the ability to bring benefits to our community in open space and in jobs and in recreation, and there's also the potential for energy renewal out there.
Thank you for having me here in Brisbane tonight. I'm Zizi Searls. Most of my time I spend as a remedial project manager on Superfund sites, cleaning up sites like the Brisbane Baylands. But today, I'm going to talk to you about some renewable energy options that you could potentially have in the future. And it promotes the development of renewable energy on contaminated sites, all types of renewable energy, wind, geothermal, solar, biomass. And one of the important components of this project is to make sure that there's community buy-in any time these projects are in the community. There is existing infrastructure which can be leveraged, and there's an example of that here in Brisbane Baylands. There's a PG&E connection station, transmission station, not far from the site.
The Baylands is a perfect blending of land and a time in America's history in which we need to turn away from the energy of the past to the energy of the future.
A solar-powered plant like this could provide all of the energy needed to run all of the businesses that are built on the Baylands and perhaps everything in the city of Brisbane as well.
So we have the motion on the table. Now we just vote. Okay, so can we have a voice call?
Okay. The motion has already been made, but we can say that we accept the resolution with the modifications as stated.
Okay, and can we have a second? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, the Planning Commission really did the right thing. They did the job. They studied the EIR, huge, long document. They heard all the testimony. They made a recommendation that emphasizes renewable energy generation in a solar and wind farm. First of all, the EIR identified the renewable energy alternative as the most environmentally superior alternative. Second, we had the National Renewable Energy Lab conduct a formal scientific feasibility study of the Baylands. And they found that the solar farm would be both economically and environmentally feasible. And third, the city conducted a survey of people's opinions on the Baylands. And when it came to renewable energy, 86% of the people said that renewable energy was either somewhat important, very important, or extremely important to them.
My name is Greg Anderson, and I'm a member of the Brisbane Planning Commission that studied the Brisbane Baylands Environmental Impact Report and made a recommendation on the development project for the city council. The Planning Commission's treatment of the environmental impact report for the Brisbane Baylands process covered a period of 11 months, which included 11 deliberation meetings and over 10 public hearings. An important component of the Brisbane Planning Commission's recommendation for the Brisbane Baylands Development Project was an 85-acre utility-scale renewable energy generation plant. In the developer plan, there's a much higher level of density of development so that the usage of the energy required by the plan is also much higher. The Creble Plan was energy-positive by over 30 gigawatts, whereas the developer plan required more than 30 gigawatts of extra energy consumption than it produced.
The community has the right to decide, determine land use. And the Planning Commission has made a land use recommendation that is in line with what the citizens of Brisbane want and the general plan. It really represents forward-thinking, what Brisbane and this community can contribute to the Bay Area at large. If you go on the Internet and you watch videos of what happens during liquefaction, it's just like if you mix sand and water in a bowl and you shake it. Try this at home. It's really interesting. All the sand goes to the bottom and all the liquid gets pushed to the top. And so if you have a landfill that is being shaken during an earthquake event and that landfill is saturated with water that's been sent in chemicals, and then that land gets shaken and all the soil settles and all of that lichaid that's saturated with carcinogenic chemicals and heavy metals and God knows what, because never forget that that was an unregulated landfill. There was no records kept about what was put in there. There was no regulations about what could be dumped in there almost 100 years ago. All of that stuff during an earthquake event is just going to come right up. And when the whole Bay Area is in crisis, what's really going to be our outlook for cleaning up all of that toxic slurry and liquid that has bubbled to the top after an earthquake?
There was a study done by the Environmental Protection Agency and the National Renewable Energy Laboratories, and that study was published in 2013. And according to that study, the solar farm that Creble is promoting was feasible. And not only was it feasible in 2013 when the study was published, but since then, the prices of solar panels have gone down considerably so that that makes it even more feasible than it was when the study was published. Some people make the argument that solar farms should be in the desert because it's in the middle of nowhere and it's an obstruction to no one. But the reality is that in desert, solar panels work less efficiently because they work better in cool temperatures. In addition to that, you have to transfer power from the desert, however many hundreds of miles, to reach the population centers. And in so doing, you lose energy due to the transfer of power over that many miles. And another thing that I think should be mentioned is that the solar farm promoted by Creble does not require water.
Future water supplies identified and analyzed must bear a likelihood of actually proving available. Speculative sources and unrealistic allocations called "paper water" are insufficient basis for decision-making under CEQA. It was a case brought by citizens against a developer and a city council who had approved a plan where there was no water. They called it "paper water." It was theoretical water, not agreed-upon water. The city council had gone ahead and approved the plan and approved the final EIR, and the citizens brought their case all the way up to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court ruled against the developer and against the city council because you must specify and have agreements for the required water, not just saying it's there somewhere out in the world, but we have agreements that someone will provide this water and we can get it delivered to the location. My sense is that the Planning Commission did a fabulous job of going through all of these issues and came forward with a recommendation that is sound and feasible and falls within our general plan.
As a citizen of Brisbane, as a homeowner who lives here with his family, the traffic is a major concern. I mean, I just cannot be happy with bumper-to-bumper traffic. I mean, that's just absurd. And I think we have to try our best to stop that, to mitigate that. I've kind of looked at it, and I realized that the traffic impact would be something like having a San Francisco 49er football game here every day of the week. And, you know, you probably remember all the traffic and congestion from a football game. Imagine having that every single day of the week, in addition to all of the other development that's going to be happening north of us. And I think if we can at least just eliminate the 49er traffic, you know, we could probably handle the rest of it.
We're looking for communities that could have, be a model for others. And it looks like Brisbane is on the way.
You will be joining with the smartest economies around the planet. Germany has pledged to be 100% renewably powered by 2050. Scotland by 2020. Give Brisbane the opportunity to be a city of the future.
And so Brisbane has the opportunity to do the right thing. And I believe with Creble's plan of clean energy production and sensible development, we're going to benefit everybody.
So, to repeat, Creble wholeheartedly supports the commission's recommendations. Above all, using a large part of the landfill, toxic brownfield for solar and wind farm. We believe that the results would be truly sustainable. Fiscally sound for the city, generating clean electricity, not only for Brisbane, but our Baylands development, but for all of us and beyond. And reducing greenhouse gas emissions significantly to implement the city's climate action plan.
Hi, Deb Horn, resident of Brisbane. The Creble Plan is visionary and does not preclude development. Our main contention with the two applicant plans are the significant and unavoidable negative impacts that you've been hearing about as we've been discussing the EIR. Simply placing solar on the rooftops of the two applicant plans doesn't address these negative impacts. There are many questions before you that need to be answered before considering changes to the general plan. Just a few of the questions that come to mind is: How do these plans pencil out financially for Brisbane to pay for the ongoing services? Is there real transportation planning and funding to support the required infrastructure to prevent gridlock? How can this land be safe for people? Did we score? How can this land be safe for people when it's not safe for trees? Tree roots can pierce the impermeable cap, so trees are not allowed. How much liability is Brisbane willing to take on from How much liability is Brisbane willing to take on from largely unknown contaminants that lie beneath the surface, considering the unstable geography and climate change? Can we trust the regulatory agencies when the EPA is being slashed? There have been two major toxic redevelopment failures in the Bay Area that were signed off as safe to build by our regulatory agencies in recent years. And finally, is there sufficient water to meet CEQA requirements? As the Planning Commission dug into these and other questions before you, they concluded the level of detail included in the EIR was insufficient to justify the level of development proposed in the developer-sponsored plan. The Krebel Plan does not have these issues. Finally, I want to thank you, as I do every time, for all of your hard work to date. And I trust that in your deliberations, that you'll dig into the dirt of this land and find some solid answers, and ensure that the health and well-being of the community who will be greatly impacted by your decision for generation to come, generations to come, are in good hands. Thank you.
Good afternoon, good evening, I should say. I'm Adam Mayor and city council members, Pram Law, a Brisbane resident. Now, the Baylands Environmental Impact Report identified the renewable energy plan once again as the superior environmental alternative. And it is the only concept plan designed to actually implement Brisbane's general plan. The Constitution for our future development, and as a reminder, it was found feasible by a highly regarded and respected scientific feasibility study conducted by the National Renewable Energy Laboratories and supported by not only the majority of your constituents, but also the mayor of San Francisco, the Sierra Club, and the State Lands Commission.
Greetings. Ray Miller, Brisbane curmudgeon. I have three points. First, we should all review the results of the city's Baylands survey before embarking on the decision-making process. Two of the three questions in the survey that referenced renewable energy have not been mentioned yet. One asked respondents whether it was important that any new development should create enough renewable energy to cover its needs. 84% thought that was important. The second asked the respondents whether they supported building renewable energy generation facilities in the Baylands. 78% said yes. Second, I would like to emphasize some points from the NREL feasibility study of solar potential on the Baylands. The laboratory specialists studied both the developer's proposed plan and the renewable energy alternative. They investigated both the solar resources of the site and its economic feasibility using their technical models. They concluded that solar access was 90% or higher, and that all the options were economically feasible. Because this team specialized in brownfields, they included remediation costs in their The best Krebel renewable energy alternative has an estimated payback period of 10.7 years. The system has a lifespan of 25 to 30 years. It should be noted that this analysis uses conventional market pricing. It does not take into account the positive value generated from the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions and the associated pollution. That brings me to my third point. The more accurate way to measure the complete benefits of renewable energy such as solar is to include the public ecological benefits that the market pricing system excludes. Principle 9 in the city's Sustainable Framework recognizes this important point. When people discuss the three Es of sustainability, environment, equity, and economics, they sometimes overlook this crucial aspect. Environmental costs or benefits are usually not incorporated into the market calculations of the business firms, farms, or government entities. Economists recognize this omission of externalities as a market failure. Ecological economics has been developed in order to get a more accurate assessment of our impact on the earth. We should guide our decisions accordingly.
Good evening, Honorable Counsel, Honorable Madam Mayor. I'm Joel Diaz, and I wanted to talk briefly about high-speed rail and the potential impacts on the Baylands. And you know, it's a major proposed land use not yet covered by the Baylands' EIR and has yet to be considered by the city council. Their plan is to locate a switching and light maintenance yard there. They're proposing to use about the same amount of land that would be required for the solar farm, so it seems like a very compatible use that maybe we can integrate the two together. We've had conversations with high-speed rail, and they're very much open to supporting that. So we would like to study that, and we feel that there's great benefit to be achieved from that. We understand that their EIR, high-speed rail's EIR, is about to come out in a couple of months, and we think that there's a lot of data and information to be gained from studying that and reading that, and we feel that that's an important step to understanding the impact. And really, that we should study that before making any decisions, because we just don't know how high-speed rail will integrate with the development. If the development, there could be topography changes, the proposed development could be much higher than high-speed rail, you know, maybe we could mitigate it, maybe we can use solar. And if we're trying to do an intermodal hub, you know, it might be really nice to understand how high-speed rail is going to work with this intermodal hub that we're thinking about using, and how commuter patterns might change. You know, will people actually be coming from the valley to our location via high-speed rail? And does it really make sense to build housing next to Caltrain if housing's gonna be located out in the valley? So it might be really valuable to understand their EIR, which is coming out in a couple of months, and I hope the council studies it. Thank you.
Hi, Barbara Ebel, 13-year Brisbane resident. We feel that the Planning Commission was insightful to allow for the expansion of ecology while allowing for other potential uses and for retaining the businesses on industrial while keeping in mind the possibility of a high-speed rail yard. We applaud their preservation of Ice House Hill and planned improvements to Visitation Creek and enhanced wetlands. Verification is needed that between the park, Recreation Creek, and wetlands, the total open space will meet the roughly 150 acres required under the general plan or the alternate goal of 170 acres in the Brisbane Baylands Sustainability Plan. We would like the city council to consider decreasing the 186 acres of commercial development under the Planning Commission recommendation to a level consistent with the general plan, and increase the land for the renewable energy to 134 acres as proposed by Krebel or greater instead of the 85 acres proposed by the Planning Commission, thereby making renewable energy the focus of the project. The Planning Commission's recommendation of transit-oriented development, hotel office space, and around the Caltrain station and the roundhouse is consistent with both the Krebel Plan and the developer's vision. We feel that this would allow development to move forward more quickly, to reduce significant impacts both local and regional, while still complementing the transit hub and Schleswig-Lock development, and to help the state of California meet Governor Brown's goal of 50% renewable by 2030 and 100% renewable by 2040.
As already referred to, within a few years, there will be the Schleswig-Lock development, Visitation Valley Schleswig-Lock, and 1,679 units of housing right beyond the county borderline facing the Baylands. Its EIR, which I've looked at, projects added, even though it's a transit-oriented project, people will still drive. 3,000 daily cars are projected to be added to our roads, Bayshore and Tunnel, 3,000 a day. Heavy congestion, even gridlock, will be on all Bayshore intersections up to the freeway. So our, and that includes all County Road intersection, we're trying to get out. General plan has a traffic control measure of level of service, and I do think that that's still a valid way of looking at the true impact on our community, our daily lives here. What is the level of service when the Schleswig-Lock is built before anything happens in the Baylands? Actually, San Francisco should have made some mitigations to their massive plans. Hunter's Point has that Geneva extension, but nothing for the Schleswig-Lock. And they could have, for instance, taken immunity line that stops at Sunnydale at the Schleswig-Lock and continued down Bayshore, past Brisbane, all the way down to South City. That would be a dedicated access for us if we get gridlock.
To quote the band The Cars, hello again. On the subject of cars, there of course would be an enormous number in our community were this development to be approved, the developer's plan. But incidentally, Peninsula Clean Energy is a joint powers authority formed by San Mateo County and its 20 cities, including Brisbane. And the agency now provides clean energy to most of the county's 700,000 people and most businesses. And solar and wind energy generated on the Baylands can become a major resource on what's called distributed generation by that nonprofit agency to benefit all of us. Thank you.
Good evening, city council. I'm Tony Attard, 30-year resident of Brisbane. I am also the last speaker tonight for Krebel. However, I like to think I'm the icing on the cake. The Plan Commission's recommended plan will bring sustainable benefits to Brisbane and the region with energy positive. We ask you, Madam Mayor and council, to use that plan as the basis for continuing planning for the Baylands. We understand that this is still a concept plan and that the voters of Brisbane will have the final say. We ask that you direct your staff and the Planning Commission to work more on the concept toward a plan that would also include traffic mitigation, the nightmare to come, ecology expansion, and high-speed rail maintenance yard. On behalf of Krebel, the Committee for Renewable Energy, and myself, we thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Well, thank you, all of you, for that presentation. It was very well-prepared, and the PowerPoint was excellent, or the video. Are there any questions from the council?
You know, I just want to make a comment. Yeah, I thought the video was awesome. You did an excellent job with that.
Who put that together, by the way?
I should say, yeah, I forgot to say, it's Keith Merle.
Fantastic.
Very professional.
And you know, and I'm glad that, you know, I'm really glad about the topics that you highlighted, you know, water and traffic, and alternative energy, and climate change, and services, and you know, and of course, you know, high-speed rail is an issue that we will talk about and see where it fits in the overall planning process. But you know, you've put in a ton of energy over the years, and that's really important, you know, for this process, so thanks.
Are there any questions?
No, I don't really have any questions. I do want to thank all the members of the community that spent so much time looking at this and researching and trying to find ways to make the project as sustainable as possible. Really appreciate all the hard work and the information that you've been sharing with us.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Next, we have BB CAG, the Brisbane Baylands Community Advisory Group. Clara Johnson.
Mayor Liu and council members. A little short. The Brisbane Baylands Community Advisory Group was established in the spring of 2005 under the auspices of the California Department of Toxic Substance Control, as provided for in California law. We have operated under the following mission statement since then. The purpose of the Brisbane Baylands Community Advisory Group is to provide an open forum and community-based input from the communities of Brisbane, Daly City, and San Francisco, and to advise the agency charged with remediation actions on three contiguous sites commonly referred to as the Brisbane Baylands. Over the last 12 years, the speaker who exerted the greatest influence and provided us with the greatest insight into the Bayland site and how we might understand it, make comments, and give advice to you and other regulators, has been G. Fred Lee, Ph.D., P-E-B-C-E-E-F.A.S.C.E. He is both highly respected and uniquely qualified to provide guidance in the field of toxic contamination and remediation. Dr. Lee has only one goal, and that is to protect human health and the environment. He works to inform the public and those responsible for making decisions on both what the risks are and what the potential and unknown risk may be. His approach is comprehensive, not narrowly drawn. His approach embraces the full range of possibilities. He does not seek to promote any outcome for the sake of that result. His qualifications are fully stated on his website, gfredlee.com. We contracted with Dr. Lee to review and make recommendations on the Baylands. He did a remarkable job, and he was remarkably generous with his time, giving us, gifting us with many times the effort that we paid for. We recommend and urge you to hire Dr. G. Fred Lee as your ongoing environmental advisor on the Brisbane Baylands. It will be one of the best decisions you will make as a council member. Dr. Lee's expertise and work ethic will assure you that you will have the best and unbiased advice available, whichever alternative development plan you select. We will be happy to discuss our recommendation with you, and thank you for considering it. I want to commend you for the extensive public input that you have pursued in the processing of this application. You have followed one of the noblest traditions of the city of Brisbane in doing so. The BB CAG has considered the safety of this project, of this project for this site for more than a decade. Dana Dilworth petitioned the state of California to create this group of citizens who were independent of any government agency to represent the people. We have had some members for the entire duration of the effort, some have joined along the way, and we have lost many who joined us for a while. There is one thing that we can say with certainty, and that is there are many uncertainties and more than a few data gaps regarding the Baylands' toxic contamination. It is with these insufficiencies in mind, plus the established presence of various toxic chemicals and metals, that we make our recommendations to you. Please note on the wall the selected pages from the operations and management plan for groundwater on the Schleswig site and OU1. Further remediation is not being required at this time. The groundwater investigation included the contamin- The groundwater investigation included the contamination on the OU1 site in Brisbane as well. The pages show where monitoring wells are located, and they show the amounts of the 10 most threatening chemicals, CBOCs, chlorine-based volatile organic compounds, in specific wells over time. There have been attempts at remediation, and they have had some success. The problem is that the amounts in some of those wells have been bouncing around. They bounce down, and then they bounce back up. There is sometimes an explanation, but many times there isn't. This indicates to us that they don't fully understand the size of the reservoir of the toxic CBOCs. Perhaps there are other factors that are not fully understood. This is a data gap. The pages also show the greatest, the areas of the greatest concentration of the chemical TCE, that's in, the ones that are in blue, and the depths of the groundwater in two of the three types of formation that underlay the surface. They are fill, merced formation, excuse me, and coma formation. The California Department of Toxic Substance Control has permitted development on this side, the Schleswig site, only subject to a recorded land use covenant, including numerous conditions and prohibitions. The monitoring of this site will continue in perpetuity. Engineering controls to protect against soil vapor intrusion are required for all buildings. These kind of requirements are not placed on property without careful consideration of the risk involved. We believe the imposition of these limitations are an indication of the risk. They are also based on laws that were developed considering not only human health and the environmental quality risk, but also the cost of lowering those risks to the property owner. We believe that they don't adequately protect the public and that they should be more restrictive since there is an element of risk that is not fully understood. There is also arsenic and lead in the form of arsenated lead on the Northern Rail Yard site. Please note that the CDC has declared no safe lead blood level in children has been identified. The remediation of these chemicals that is proposed is to sweep them under asphalt and hope they stay there. The remedial action plan for CBOC-impacted soil in OU1 has not been developed yet, nor has one been developed for the arsenated lead. We believe that the groundwater directions in OU1 should be reviewed before any action is taken. We also believe that the impacts of sea level rise and intrusion into the groundwater in OU1 and Schleswig should be investigated and evaluated for inclusion in the decision-making regarding any future remedial action plan. We must remember that the source of the CBOCs is on the Schleswig site. The monitoring wells extend all the way down into OU2, the Southern Brisbaneia Rail Yard, where there are two wells. State-of-the-art ground image spectrography, ground penetrating radar, and GIS technology should be used to better understand risks throughout the Baylands. These technologies are available now, and they will soon be cheaper. The development of the OU1 soil wrap is a good place to start using these tools that will help to close data gaps. They might also provide better, more detailed, and reliable answers to questions about how the ground, including fill, might react in an earthquake, to seawater intrusion, to compaction efforts. Since there have been recent lowering of the maximum contaminant level for some chemicals, for example, Brisbane, and, I'm sorry, benzene, and arsenic in drinking water, it is possible that the MCL for other toxic chemicals found on the Baylands will be lowered, thereby revealing a greater risk than is currently understood. OU2, the southern portion of the Brisbaneia Rail Yard, is one of the larger geographic areas of the Baylands, 180 acres. The Bay Area Regional Water Quality Control Board is responsible for overseeing OU2 and making sure that it is remediated. In the last seven years, the only mention of it on the board's website, GeoTracker, are references to the fact that it is a brownfield site and the fact that their representative has given presentations to the BB CAG. There hasn't been any substantive action on OU2 for a decade or more. There is also confusion whether OU2 is only the Southern Rail Yard site, or that it may include the Industrial Way site. It appears that it should only be the Southern Rail Yard because of its description and size. UPC has shown the Industrial Way site as a part of OU2. There is a second confusion on GeoTracker. It says that the Southern Rail Yard site is identified by their number R220080019, but that ID belongs to the Kinder Morgan facility when you call it up. These mix-ups are not confidence-inspiring. It is the opinion of the Brisbane Baylands Community Advisory Group that the investigation of the OU2 portion of the Baylands is inadequate and must be improved upon in order to allow a judgment as to the degree the area represents as a risk to human health and to the environment. We have concerns regarding the actual southern portion of the SP Rail Yard, and we are also concerned about the area that is along Industrial Way and to the east of the North Ditch. The ditch connects Levenson March and its known toxic contamination problems to the San Francisco Bay. OU2 has been described originally as containing only the SP Rail Yard, while at other times the Industrial Way land has been included in it. And I emphasize that because it could lead to judgments that don't reflect the actual contamination that exists there, since the sources are different. A process was begun in 2008 to develop a remedial action plan for OU2. That process stopped. A new human health risk assessment is needed. An entirely new RAP remedial action plan must be developed for OU2 reflecting any new investigations and all new information that has come to light since 2006. We think that additional investigations are needed since many years have passed since the last ones were done. We are particularly concerned that a community-wide public meeting should be held to explain to the public all that is known about the contamination. The meeting should include a discussion of what the plan for remediation is and how it will be accomplished, when it will be done, and what monitoring is planned for the residual contamination. There needs to be an explanation of whether industrial way properties are considered of part of OU2 or not. The UPC Development Application envisions that the area along Industrial Way will either be used as a commercial district or residential district. The last sampling of this area was done in 2002. It is a 15-year-old report that included only chlorinated solvents and referred to other analytes that were shown in the laboratory report, but not included in the report from the environmental contractor, Burns McDonald. The Water Board's GeoTracker case summary report gives its case number as 41S0066. It does not provide any other information except that it mentions lead. There needs to be further investigation that would evaluate the current level of soil contamination of the 15 VOCs shown and all additional toxins that are present. The character of the contamination has not been established, nor has the extent of the contamination. These are data gaps. There should also be an investigation of the groundwater on the site. It isn't clear whether the consolidated chemicals building, the tannery, or the oil-water separator that is on the rail yard but is north and slightly upland of the sampled sites are the possible historic sources of the contamination. This is a data gap. Other reports on OU2 and Industrial Way appear to not only to not include the sampling wells included in the 2002 report. This contradiction needs to be resolved. The site was considered for listing as a superfund site, but since there were a huge number of potential superfund sites at the time, and there were a limited number that could be realistically dealt with, this site was not included. This fact does not address the level of contamination present on Industrial Way. There needs to be further investigation to understand the character and the extent of the contamination, or for any decisions are made with regard to the degree of risk that this land represents to human health and the environment. It would be gross neglect to ignore the clear data gaps that exist in the Industrial Way tox site and on OU2. We also believe that the impacts of sea level rise and intrusion into groundwater on OU2, Industrial Way, the landfill in Kinder Morgan should be investigated and evaluated for inclusion in the decision-making regarding any future remedial action plans. The landfill occupies more than 300 acres. The landfill closure plan process needs to have more than one large public meeting in order to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on the plan before it is finally decided upon. We realize that there are regulatory minimums, but the public may have valuable suggestions to add. There is an excellent report on Dr. Lee's website about post-closure issues on closed landfills. It discusses the tremendous fiscal impact of long-term liabilities associated with the landfills can have on local government, and how there are often inadequate provisions to protect them. He also writes, quote, "local regional state jurisdictions that will bear the impact of landfill failures and to which responsibility for ad infinitum landfill care will eventually fall, often do not have a full understanding of the truly long-term nature of the hazards posed by subtitle D-permitted dry-tomb landfills." The only leachate to be leaching from the landfill is unionized ammonia. The Natural Resources Defense Council has published a list of nine dangerous chemicals that you'll find in a municipal solid waste landfill. They are arsenic, benzene, cadmium, nickel, chromium, lead, mercury, chloroform, and ethylbenzene. We talked about lead before, but here is another dangerous toxic that has no MCL, no maximum contaminant level, and that's chloroform. They say it should only be one microliter per liter. That would be one millionth, one part of millions. And chloroform and ethylbenzene have a tendency to leak into the groundwater around landfills. Is there a circle of monitoring wells in the area around the extent of the waste? I don't think so. Do we even know the extent, exact extent of the waste? It may be under the lagoon on the south side. This was an unregulated landfill, a free-for-all of anything and everything. It deserves to be carefully and comprehensively monitored, with the groundwater being a priority. We should look for more than leachate. The methane monitoring system has indicated there is methane and some other volatile gases present. The system is old and is probably not in good shape. A new monitoring system is needed, and it should not wait until the owner is ready to build on the landfill to be replaced. It should be replaced as soon as possible so we understand what's going on there. The BB CAG recently learned that there is an airborne source of carbon tetrachloride coming from somewhere in Brisbane. It was discovered by a monitor at the VWR Scientific Contamination Site. Perhaps it's coming from the landfill. We don't know. The people of Brisbane and our neighbors deserve to have contamination promptly and comprehensively remediated, but it doesn't happen unless we fight for it. It can't be left to regulators who are understaffed and overworked despite their good intentions. The system also tries to protect the owners of the offending property, and that means it is only cleaned up to the minimum level necessary under the law, and that is different from saying it's safe. The people and government of Brisbane must be proactive and dedicated to the long-term goal of providing a safe environment to protect the general welfare of our people and the environment we live and breathe in. The lagoon's contamination is a mystery because of inadequate studies of its sediment and its organisms. How will we cope with the sea level rise in the lagoon and the roads that lie beside it? These are data gaps. Kinder Morgan is low enough, that's our regional distribution center for petroleum, is low enough that sea level rise will likely impact it, but the Regional Water Quality Control Board representative told us last month that she doesn't see any problem. There is an order for remediation for the tank farm at Edith Farm, and it is monitored, but we have not been satisfied with the answers that say it doesn't matter how much water sits on the asphalt at the front of the tank farm because the contamination is not so bad there. VWR Scientific has a contamination problem, and it is being voluntarily remedied by its new owner, and the Water Board is overseeing it. We don't know how long it will be monitored when it is remediated, or what its impact on the lagoon will be. The Brisbane Baylands Community Advisory Group recommends that you see to it that the actions mentioned in this report are taken, and that you approve the project alternative that places the least intense use on the Baylands, the Renewable Energy Alternative, which is the environmentally preferred alternative, and it was a recommendation that was made by the Planning Commission. There are not any credible fiscal analyses available on this mostly undescribed project application that does not have a realistic water supply. Even the Renewable Energy Alternative has a huge amount of built space, 1 to 2 million square feet. The other alternatives represent a nightmare alternative to the people of Brisbane and their love of our land and our relatively peaceful lives. We believe that the final EIR does not adequately describe the project, nor its environmental impacts. There is a huge pile on Brisbane's contamination to be remediated plate, and we cannot pretend that someone else is going to take care of it. Any consultants that are hired will need to be carefully overseen by the people and the government of Brisbane. That is because, as the poet Gary Snyder once said, to paraphrase, "You can only trust people to make decisions about the place where they live." He also said, "Find your place on the planet, dig in, and take responsibility from there." The weight of this decision is a great burden to carry, and we wish you wisdom and reflection on the legacy of the traditions and values of Brisbane as you make this judgment." Thank you very much. I had a request earlier from Dana Dilworth to yield some of our time to her. She had previously requested some and gave it back, and of course, that's at your desire. And I would like to know if you would like to ask questions now, or if you're going to allow Dana to speak after she speaks.
I believe Dana will not be speaking today. Is that correct? I thought we, maybe our city clerk can elaborate on that.
She had requested to do some public comment after.
Oh, okay. She was originally supposed to be one of the speakers. I thought I saw an email saying she's not going to be a speaker, but she'll be giving public comment, you're saying.
Okay.
Thank you for the car vacation. So we can have the council ask questions at this point? So you're asking whether.
You'd like to ask questions at this point.
Whether, you're saying you're yielding some of your time.
Yes.
To Dana.
Correct. That's right. If you allow it.
She, if she's part of the BB CAG presentation, you're saying?
She would, she is a member of the BB CAG, but her opinions that she's going to express are her opinions rather than BB CAG's opinions.
Okay. I'm okay with her speaking now, if that's okay with the council?
Yeah, I'm fine.
As long as it's, you know, within the time limits that you've set.
Thank you. And did you have any questions that you'd like either to ask now or after she speaks?
Why don't we wait until after she speaks?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I was real concerned when you had invited the consultant, and I'm just calling her Dr. Susan, I don't know, because I don't remember her last name, when she was refuting some of the stuff from G. Fred Lee's comments. So one of the things that I did is I took the 57 pages of G. Fred Lee's comments and condensed it down into six and a half pages. I'm not going to take the time to read them, but I did highlight them if you even wanted Cliff Notes of those six and a half pages. So that's going to be in the public record. And what I want to say is it has been 26 years since the developer was last told that they had an inadequate plan for our housing on Baylands, and no one would think that 26 years, or one would think that in 26 years they could get it right. Again, we are presented with a plan that has inadequate information to protect the public, as noted in the public's comments, as well as G. Fred Lee's, Dr. G. Fred Lee's report. It's combined with poor and inadequate regulatory programs, poor and inadequate testing procedures, poor and inadequate monitoring, poor and inadequate understanding of the synergistic effect of multiple chemicals, poor and inadequate stormwater quality management systems, poor and inadequate systems to identify new contaminants, poor and inadequate understanding of future sea level rise, storm surges, or earthquake impacts. So we want better conclusions, better scientific review for the safety through an open, independent advisory panel, as suggested by Dr. Lee. A minimal approach to protect. A minimal approach to protecting the public is unacceptable. Putting people's health at risk is not acceptable. 26 years is far too long for these situations to persistently leak into our environment without anything more than a Band-Aid of interim protection. You should declare this land the blight that it is and through eminent domain, develop a cleanup plan first. Then you can sell it back to wielding builders if feasible, and that's the language for all the mitigation measures is if feasible. These landowners have not fulfilled their obligation for cleanup through these proposed plans through these last 26 years. They have left the hard stuff until last, if at all, but are asking us to pack people around the lesser toxic areas, at least the ones that we are calling safe for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Council questions?
You know, I don't have any questions, but I just want to thank CCAG members, I mean, the BB CAG members, sorry. You know, you've been doing this for a long time, and I know that you really care about the safety of the site, and, you know, I'm glad that you had reached out to Dr. Lee and, you know, he's brought some good insight to the subject. And, yeah, we'll see if, you know, what role that he might be able to play. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Clara.
I would like to make a comment really quickly.
Sure.
Is the 15-minute break, if needed, meant to be a break or is that meant to be like the break for questions?
No, that's a break in the meeting.
So, we've gone over time for the presentations because.
Right.
That break is no longer there anymore. So, I'm, in terms of moving forward the meeting, I'm okay moving forward, but I really would like to make sure that speakers, the next set of speakers, stay on track because I think we're going to need the next 15-minute break when it comes.
Right. And if we don't have, if we don't feel like we need the break right now, we can insert the break, you know, at any point. We don't have to wait till we get through the next four, so.
I would just like to, for the public to understand, I would like us to try and, everyone try and stick with their allotted time, so.
Yeah, we do have a lot, a lot of speakers to cover, and we don't want to be here all night, but we certainly appreciate all of the input. Are there any other council questions or what's the feeling on whether we need the break at this point? Would anyone like the break?
I'm okay with moving forward.
Okay. All right. Let's move forward, and whenever anyone wants a break, just chime in. Okay, so, next up is Adrian Etherington, Sustainable San Mateo County.
Sorry, I think I'm going to have to put my handouts aside for a minute. I will do my best to stick to my remarks and keep this timely. So, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Liu. Council members, I appreciate the opportunity to present this evening. My name's Adrian Etherington. I'm the Executive Director of Sustainable San Mateo County. I'd like to just start with a brief introduction to Sustainable San Mateo County, where a local nonprofit organization founded in 1992 in response to the Rio Earth Summit's call to think globally and act locally. You can see up here on the screen our vision, mission, and values. We use a definition of sustainability that comes from the 1987 Bruntland Commission that sustainable development is meeting the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. So, at SSMC, we often talk about the three Es of economy, equity, environment. You might have also heard people using the phrase triple bottom line or people profit planet. The point is that all of these issues are interrelated and must be considered together and balanced to create sustainable communities. This year, we're celebrating 25 years of working in San Mateo County to inform and inspire sustainable change locally. One of the main tools that we use is our indicators report, which has been our core program for over 20 years and was founded on the principle that what gets measured gets managed. It tracks data on factors that impact our quality of life and includes over 40 metrics per year plus an annual key indicator which we cover more in depth. The report topics include climate, energy, housing, transportation, poverty, and water, among many others. This year, we chose to focus on cost of living because it impacts the lives of so many residents, and frankly, here in San Mateo County, you can't really avoid talking about it. It's being discussed just about every day. The topic also speaks to the interconnections between the county and the region, which has increasingly become urbanized, implicating shifts in our neighborhoods, health, environment, and culture. We all know that when it comes to cost of living, housing costs are the biggest piece of most people's budgets. Median sales prices have increased by approximately 50% since a 15-year low in 2011. Similarly, the market average rent increased by 49% between 2010 and 2015, while renters' median income only increased by 8%. In 2015, 30% of homeowners spent more than 30% of their income on housing. However, it is renters that are really being squeezed, with 48% of renters spending over 30% of their income on rent and 25% spending over 50% of their income, considered to be severely housing burdened. A main contributor to these high housing costs is really supply and demand and the fact that we simply aren't building very much housing. Only 23% of our housing has been built since 1980 and only 6% since 2000. Households earning the median income in San Mateo County cannot afford to purchase the median-priced home or condo in the county. In fact, this graph is now slightly dated, and as of 2017, we're seeing that a family of four with a household income of over $105,000 now qualifies as low income for below-market-rate housing purposes based on our area median income. Employment in the county has risen dramatically since the recession, with over 64,000 jobs created from 2010 to 2015, while only 3,844 housing units were built. In fact, as of 2015, there were over 111,000 more jobs in the county than housing units. Furthermore, 61% of the local jobs earn less than $100,000 annually, a level which does not allow them to compete for the limited supply of local housing, as we just saw. So, jobs-housing fit is the ratio of low-wage jobs and affordable housing units in a region. Many of you may be familiar with the term jobs-housing balance, which looks at all of the jobs compared to all of the housing units. So, this is actually taking it a step further in comparing low-wage jobs and affordable housing units, so what the folks in those jobs can actually afford. We can see that most of San Mateo County has more than four times as many low-wage jobs than housing unit. Here in Brisbane, you're actually doing a little bit better than the rest of the county, although we still see a jobs-housing fit in the two-to-four range, meaning two-to-four times as many low-wage jobs as affordable housing units. Overall, San Mateo County has less than 10,000 rentals affordable to those earning less than $50,000 annually, and some 25,882 affordable housing units would need to be added to meet the current need. As a result, we're seeing very high levels of gentrification and displacement. According to the Bay Area Regional Health and Equities Initiative's Displacement Brief, San Mateo County had the highest rate of the nine-county Bay Area as of 2015, with 28% having undergone advanced gentrification or displacement, and additional 28% of the county at risk. This leads to communities that are less diverse and has many negative effects on displaced residents, including high levels of stress and health problems. It really boils down to a simple equation. More jobs than homes leads to high home prices and increased traffic congestion as people are forced out of the area and are commuting back for all of the jobs that we are adding. Around half of our workforce is commuting in from a different county, with 15% of those commuting more than 50 miles. Commute times are growing, and more and more of our roadways are congested. On average, San Mateo County residents spend 17% of their income on transportation, and only 7% of workers are able to take transit for their commute. Walking and biking are arguably the least expensive modes of transportation. However, in a suburban environment, the distance between home, work, and retail outlets often requires a vehicle. Meanwhile, transportation is the biggest source of greenhouse gas emissions, which are driving climate change, and global weather measurements indicate that 2016 was the hottest year on record. There's my graphic. So, the solution we be, we believe is to think regionally and act locally, harkening back to our founding motto of thinking globally and acting locally. It's important to remember that we're all in this together. What we do in one community in the Bay Area does affect others. The housing, jobs, air quality, energy use, sea level rise, these are all issues that are affecting us as a region, and we need to be remembering that we are all dependent on one another. We must focus jobs, housing, and transit together in infill locations. Infill development is a continuation of the county's long history of preserving open space and centering homes and businesses along our transit corridor. This creates complete and vibrant neighborhoods that are walkable and bikeable and provides opportunities to move away from our reliance on driving. It is important to balance new development with retention of low-wage and middle-wage residents to ensure economic inclusivity and reduce traffic congestion. In San Mateo County, many residents are becoming increasingly favorable toward new housing and areas that are already developed. You can see on the screen the results of a recent poll by the Bay Area Council of San Mateo County found that 57% of residents over the age of 40 are in favor of residential development, and when you look at those between the ages of 18 and 39, that actually jumps up to 70%. This is really pretty understandable because these younger folks are most likely the ones who are not able to afford to live here. They're more likely to be renters. We hear of young adults living with their parents much longer, and probably many folks in the room here today know someone, or maybe they have themselves seen their kids leaving for college and not moving back to the area at all because of the cost of living. We also know that this age group, early in their careers, often with young children, are less likely or able to participate in meetings like this one. So, just yesterday, we released our mid-year update of our 2017 indicators report focused on cost of living. The majority of what I've just discussed was released yesterday, and we also had a panel of experts, the folks you can see on the screen there, who were discussing solutions to our housing and transportation woes. Some of the ideas that they discussed included simply adding more housing development, particularly infill development, affordable housing, and inclusionary development. Density was discussed as this creates the population base that makes public transit more feasible and affordable. Generally, we need more and better transportation alternatives, including safe walking and biking routes and discount transit passes for lower-income workers. One of our speakers talked quite a bit about parking and the fact that driving is the most subsidized form of transportation, largely due to free parking, so we need parking that is priced appropriately, as well as to look for opportunities for shared parking and unbundling parking and housing costs. I do want to note that I have some of our indicator summaries here for you. As I noted, these are hot off the press. We just released them yesterday, so we'll have those here for you and your city staff and probably some extras if there's a place that I can leave them for the audience, if that's acceptable. I don't have very many remaining, and you should have received them already, but I also brought our winter 2017 update, which was released in March. And of course, these are just very slim summaries of this information. We have the full contents of our indicators report, which covers many, many more topics on our website at sustainablesanmateo County dot org. So, this is my contact information. Thanks for your time. I'm happy to take any questions. I do want to be very clear in that my presentation is probably a lot different than many of the others that you're hearing this evening. Sustainable San Mateo County as an organization has not traditionally taken positions on issues. We have started to do that, but our advocacy policy specifically says that we do not take positions on individual development proposals. We thought the timing with our indicators just being released yesterday was timely for your hearing here tonight, but I do want to make that crystal clear. We understand there are a lot of issues with the proposals in front of you and wish you well in considering those. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. And do we have a copy of your presentation as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, excellent. Any questions from the council?
You know, I do, I have one question, Madam Mayor. So, Adrian, thank you for the excellent presentation and providing that clarification at the end, because that was my question.
Yes.
Was, you know, we had, well, you're familiar with our sustainability framework.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we as a city are very proud of it and sent it to Sustainable San Mateo County, and without, for sure, we're going to win that top prize, and then, but we then, we didn't get considered. And that was the reason, correct, was?
Well, I do want to clarify, it was considered.
It was considered, okay, okay.
We thought that making a decision based on plans that were still only plans and not a concrete, you know, development with something that we could see the impact of was premature.
Got it, got it. If those goals and aspirations that are in that framework, if they were implemented, do you think that they would have a significant impact on trying to create a more sustainable San Mateo County?
You know, I don't know if I'm going to answer that quite as directly as you'll hope. I think that you have a very commendable sustainability framework for the city, and I look forward to seeing exactly how that is implemented. I don't think I'm prepared to say how exactly the decisions that you make within that framework will play out. I think you still have a lot of decisions here in front of you that we'll be very interested to see how they move forward.
All right, Adrian. Thank you.
Thank you. And what would be the best way, should I give the, thank you.
Yes. Any other questions from the council?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you, and it's great to hear what is going on in the county as well. Okay, moving on to California High-Speed Rail Authority, Ben Triposis. Hope I pronounced that right.
You did. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council members, thanks for the opportunity to be with you this evening. Ben Triposis, I'm the Northern California Regional Director for the High-Speed Rail Authority, and I'm joined this evening by our Program Manager for the San Francisco-to-San Jose Project Section, Will Gimble, who will help me bring you up to speed on where we are on the high-speed rail project in the Bay Area. We are moving forward, the Bay Area Project Section's extending from the Transbay Terminal in San Francisco, south to Gilroy and east to Merced, and those project sections are currently under environmental review. We've split that entire 123-mile section into two environmental documents, one from San Francisco to San Jose, which comprises largely the Caltrain Corridor, the Caltrain commuter corridor, where we're partnering with our team at Caltrain to deliver to the Caltrain electrification project. As you may know, the authority in the state of California has committed over $700 million toward the electrification of the Caltrain commuter service, but we're working with them and moving forward environmental review in the project corridor along the peninsula and east to Merced to connect to the construction that's currently underway in the Central Valley. The high-speed rail project is fully underway, 119 miles of construction in the Central Valley, over $3 billion of investment from Merced to just north of Bakersfield, and the environmental review of the project sections in the Bay Area are intended to connect to that Central Valley construction aimed at putting into place the first revenue service for high-speed rail in California, extending from downtown San Francisco to downtown Bakersfield by 2025. That's driven by the Directive of the High-Speed Rail Authority's 2016 Business Plan, which unlike its predecessors in 2012 and 2014, has delivered a constrained plan for the delivery of revenue service, an operating high-speed service, with the $20.7 billion that we have identified in Proposition 1A bonds, federal dollars, and cap-and-trade funds that were committed to the project, 25% of which were committed to the project by the governor and the legislature. So, using those resources to deliver revenue service from San Francisco to Bakersfield by 2025, that will be the first phase of revenue service for high-speed rail in California. So, looking to make high-speed operational by 2025 and complete the entire Phase 1 program, all 800 miles that you see depicted here in the navy blue, all 800 miles, excuse me, 520 miles for Phase 1, all 800 miles include the lines in yellow that you see here that include Phase 2 extensions from Merced to Sacramento and from Los Angeles Union Station eventually to San Diego. But that navy blue line, the Phase 1 line, is expected to be completed by 2029. So, revenue service from San Francisco to Bakersfield by 2025, the Phase 1 program from San Francisco to LA Union Station in Anaheim by 2029. Significant investment in the Central Valley, over 1,000 construction workers on-site today building the sections of the system in the Central Valley from Merced to Bakersfield, as I mentioned. Over 20,000 job years of employment in workers committed to the Central Valley. 20,000 job years of employment in workers committed to the Central Valley, generating between $1.3 and $1.6 billion in labor income, and the associated economic output of that labor income, as you see here, is between three and a half and four, just over $4 billion in economic output from that infrastructure investment in California workers. Our current schedule has us moving through the environmental review process, and this is true for both the San Francisco to San Jose, as well as the San Jose to Merced Project Section. We're in the midst of the design and technical analysis, identifying station footprints at our Bay Area stations, which include eventually connecting to the Transbay Transit Center. Once the downtown extension is completed, the tunnel between the Fourth and King Station and the Transbay Transit Center that's currently being constructed, the Millbrae SFO Station, working with the City of Millbrae, and San Francisco International Airport, Caltrain, BART, among others, to identify the best intermodal connection for high-speed rail service at Millbrae to connect passengers to SFO. And we're doing significant outreach, and we'll be doing that in an ongoing way. Our plan had been to arrive at a preliminary preferred alternative for the alignments from San Francisco to Merced by August of this year, so late summer. But as a result of two compelling activities, first, working with our partner agencies at the Federal Railroad Administration, the Army Corps of Engineers, the EPA, the process of reviewing an environmental document, an environmental review of this magnitude, along with the fact that we have eight other environmental documents in process just on high-speed rail in California, has created, as you might imagine, a significant demand for resources, particularly staff resources, on the partner agency side. So just the process of reviewing the document, addressing comments, providing additional comments, completing the overall document, has added significant time to the review of the document. Coupled with the fact that local communities, like Brisbane, all the peninsula communities, San Francisco, San Jose, Los Banos, all of the communities that the Bay Area Project Sections will be moving through, have asked for additional time to work with the authority, work with the authority team, get a better understanding of the alignments, provide a greater opportunity for input and communication and understanding around the development of the high-speed rail project. So as a result, we are in the midst of modifying this schedule. We are extending the schedule for both environmental review and outreach. We will be expanding our community outreach efforts. We will continue to have community working groups for both our project sections. At the same time, we'll be having additional open house meetings and other public meetings to provide, to really cast as wide a net and provide as much time for community input and participation as we possibly can around the project. We will have a more defined schedule that we can compare to this in several weeks, but suffice it to say that we will be extending the time. So we will not be arriving at a preliminary preferred alternative in August. That schedule is moving out toward the end of this year. We'll provide you with a more detailed schedule as soon as that's made available.
What's your approximate extension, Ben?
While I can't say for certain, I would venture a guess around the three-month timeframe, probably adding three months to the schedule. So if we were aiming for a...
So it's a season, you know?
So from the summer to the fall. That's a good way to look at it, yes. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to invite Will Gimble up to walk you through the specific project sections, a little bit about how we got here, how we narrowed the alternatives to arrive at blended service with our Caltrain partners, and then talk specifically about our intentions in Brisbane around the light maintenance facility that was mentioned earlier. Will?
Yeah. And I'm not going to do a great deal of detail, because you have the program in front of you, and you can look at it in detail later. I'm going to walk through it quickly, but you have the details for your own review. This graphic shows what was originally considered the alternatives that were considered in the Bay Area to reach from the Central Valley up to San Francisco. In the East Bay, you'll see the blue line that was associated with using the Altamont Corridor. There was a discussion between using the Altamont, or the Pacheco. And the Altamont would have impacts to wetlands and water bodies in the Bay Area, and it would also make an indirect route from the Bay Area, have to go down through San Jose up to San Francisco. For those reasons, it was eliminated earlier. We also considered building along Highway 101, or I-280. As you note, I-280 is very curvy and hilly. It's not near population or employment centers. 101 is built from property line to property line. There are many overpasses. There's no spare right-of-way, and trying to build an active railroad over an 8-, 10-lane freeway would be quite a challenge. And also, that would not necessarily get our riders to the downtowns, or the places where people live and work. So we also had considered a four-track grade-separated system from San Francisco to San Jose, two tracks for commuter, two tracks for high speed. This was what was proposed earlier in 2011. This would have significant community impacts. It's fairly expensive, and it would have a lot of construction impacts on the communities. And for those reasons, the authority moved away from that and developed a blended service with Caltrain, where we'll reuse the existing infrastructure as much as possible, provide both commuter and intercity transportation. There are two elements that are still on the table. They're not currently part of the project. One would be to build a new tunnel from Brisbane to the Transbay Transit Center to replace the existing four Caltrain tunnels. That is still something that's possible in the future, but it's not currently part of the project as designed. And the other option is the legislation provides for a mid-peninsula station, and the authority has worked with the local communities. However, current ridership analysis and preferences of the host cities are that there is not a pursuit of a mid-peninsula station as part of this project now, but it can certainly be done as an infill project later on. So we're left with the 51-mile corridor connecting downtown San Francisco to downtown San Jose. This is the smallest footprint of those alternatives that we were looking at, the fewest environmental impacts. We're still evaluating this, and it has some different project elements that are being evaluated in the environmental document. As Ben said, there'll be three high-speed stations, first at Fourth and King until we can get to the Transbay, SFO in Millbrae, and Deirdre Don at San Jose. And while we talk about these different elements, they can be mixed or matched into the final alternative, but this is how it's being presented for evaluation. Alternative A has a light maintenance facility at Brisbane East, that's the east of the main line on the former landfill area. We propose no new additional passing tracks, and we propose a short aerial viaduct to get to an aerial Deirdre Don station, if that is what is built. We're still considering an at-grade or an aerial station at Deirdre Don. Alternative B considers a light maintenance facility on the west side of the main line, which is over where the old rail yard was. It does propose a set of passing tracks in the middle of the peninsula, as well as a longer viaduct to get into a San Jose-Deirdre Don station. True to all these alternatives will be station modifications. We will have to change the platforms at Fourth and King and at Millbrae. We'll need high platforms, because our trains will have doors at 51 inches above top of rail. Caltrain currently uses platforms that are eight inches above top of rail. We're aiming to operate our trains at a maximum speed of 110 miles per hour along the peninsula. Out in the Central Valley, our trains will go 220 miles an hour. So this is a significantly slower traffic, but still fast by local standards. We are proposing to have a maximum of four high-speed rail trains and six commuter trains per hour per direction in the peak period. So that means 10 trains in each direction during the peak period. We recognize that is putting a lot more traffic on the line, but as Ben has said, we're trying to build capacity, and we're trying to provide a sustainable method of transportation for people to get around. We recognize that we'll have to make safety modifications at the at-grade crossings. We'll be happy to work with local jurisdictions that are interested in developing grade separation projects along the peninsula. We're working with San Mateo County and the city of San Mateo, and the authority is willing to work with others on those projects as they come forward. We're also working with Caltrain to eliminate some of the holdout rule stations, which, because of the way that they're designed, a train when serving the station, other trains cannot enter the station. Generally, it's because the platform is located between the two tracks. So we're proposing to rebuild Burlingame Broadway and Atherton Caltrain stations to eliminate that holdout rule, which will make operations better for both commuter and intercity service. Near the terminal of an operation like this, you need to have someplace to store your trains, someplace where you can keep them overnight and do light maintenance, prep them, clean them, stock them, and use them again in the morning. You want this facility to be as close to your terminal as possible, so you eliminate deadhead time, or deadtime where you're taking up slots on the railroad to get the empty equipment to the initial station. There's a reason why the Baylands train yard is here. It's because the Southern Pacific needed a facility close to San Francisco, where they could store their trains, restock them, and then start their service again in San Francisco. That's why we're looking at this facility as a logical place for us to have a light maintenance facility. We had considered alternatives. We looked up at the airport properties, and we also looked at Port of San Francisco properties. None of those facilities were close to the alignment. It would have meant having to take the trains away from the alignment. It was narrow, oddly configured pieces of land. We couldn't get through movements. We'd have to back in, back out, and operationally, it's just not feasible to operate a maintenance facility of that design for an operation of this scale. So we are still looking at the two locations in Brisbane, both east and west of the main lines. Here are some illustrations of the alternatives. They look like rubber chickens, but they're actually outlines of where the actual rail facilities would be. You can see Alternative B on the left is on the west side of the main line. Alternative East is on the east side of the main line. And I want to point out that what we're proposing would be the yellow area only. So this leaves a lot of other land for other uses and other potential uses here in Brisbane. Here's a better view of the light maintenance facility on the east side option, and also a diagram of the Bay Shore Station. The current station is the black platforms, and for us to put in our service, we would have to move the southbound platform to the south. And this is a concern, because a lot of the current riders that use this facility come from the north, but we would have to shift that platform a bit to the south in order to make it fit. Similarly, if we're on the west side, a similarly shaped facility, and again, we would have to move the Caltrain southbound platform a little bit on the Bay Shore Station. Both of these elements look at a Geneva Avenue extension is still possible. We're planning that that will go up and over the facility. We will have to reconstruct parts of Tunnel Avenue, especially at the south end near the Brisbane Lagoon, but we want to maintain the Bay Shore Station connection to neighborhoods to the north, as well as new neighborhoods that are developing to the east, south, and the west. And we would provide flyovers, which means the trains would actually go up on small little bridges to get up over their own tracks, so that we don't interfere with movements coming in and out of the yard with the mainline tracks. Okay, I'm going to open it now to questions, and I'll invite Ben to come over and respond.
Thank you, Will. And just in closing, I want to thank City Manager Clay Holstein and John Swicki for their support of our analysis and working with the High Speed Rail team. And we look forward to continuing to working with city staff and the council as we go through our analysis and work together to answer any questions as the process comes together. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have questions.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much for coming, because I feel like this is really valuable information. I kind of wish we would have had it earlier, that we heard from you, because we've kind of been, like, discussing what might or might not happen. And so this is just really, really valuable information that we've gotten tonight. If you could just, just for somebody who's not really familiar with, you know, the industry that you're in, if you could just let us know, like, what does light maintenance mean?
Just as Will had described it, it's essentially a preparation of the trains for the next day's service.
Okay.
That trains are cleaned and prepped, and light improvements, modifications, small repairs are made on the train overnight to prepare them for the next day's run. We will have a heavy maintenance facility in the Central Valley. That site hasn't been selected as yet, but that heavy maintenance facility would be where you'd take the trains to replace wheelsets, to replace motors or engine parts, or do heavy overhauls of the system itself. What would happen here is to, as I said, prepare the trains for the next day's operation, so they could begin their service out of the Transbay Terminal in San Francisco, or out of Fourth and King in San Francisco, to run statewide.
Okay. And then you went so fast, that if you could just go over again, like, what would determine whether you're going to use the east plan or the west plan?
Well, that is part of the conversation that we're having with the community, with the property owner. Thanks also to UPC and Jonathan Charfman. We've had an opportunity to meet with them on several occasions, and we'll continue to be doing that. But to really get a sense of what the best location would be operationally, from a systems standpoint, and also what would be the best location from a community standpoint. That's why we're here tonight. That's why we've been working with city staff, and I look forward to continuing to work with the council, to get a sense of what the best outcome for the city of Brisbane would be, as well as for the statewide high-speed rail system. So the environmental analysis, we hope, or we expect, will show us the superior alternative of the two, to locate the facility both for the system and for the community.
Do you currently have a plan, like, comparing the two sites that high-speed rail prefers, or is it really just?
We haven't landed on a preferred as yet. We're doing an apples-to-apples comparison of both sites, trying to determine what the best operational outcomes are for the service, trying to minimize the overall costs of the development of the site, trying to find ways that we could integrate other components into the site, whether it's a development that the city is interested in, or other uses that the city might be interested in. Which of those sites would be able to absorb those uses more effectively, while accommodating a light maintenance facility for high-speed rail? So those are the decisions that we're trying to arrive at.
Okay. My last question is just, since you're here, and I feel like the public would be interested in this information, just in general. How long do you anticipate, from the start of the line, San Francisco to the end of the line, say in Anaheim, how long would you anticipate, if you're riding it all the way through, how long would that take, and how much do you think that would cost? I know it's 2029, and it's hard to project, but you might have an idea.
My daughter keeps hammering me for that day trip to Disneyland.
Yeah, that's really what I'm thinking about, to be honest.
But a trip from downtown San Francisco to downtown Los Angeles, Los Angeles Union Station, is, has to be completed in two hours and 40 minutes. That's our mandated travel time. So that's the expectation for overall travel. In terms of the fare, the fares will be ultimately organized by the operator, the High Speed Rail Authority. The state of California is responsible for building the statewide system. We won't be ultimately operating it on a day-to-day basis. That will be a concession error that we will bring onboard. The state will bring onboard to run. But in general, the goal of the authority is to have fares be essentially 80% of the airline fare between city pairs. So if it's $100 between San Francisco and Los Angeles, the high-speed train ticket would be $80. So in just in a ballpark, that's the goal. But again, the ultimate decisions will be left up to the operator.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Great.
Questions?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. Just, do you have a guesstimated cost for that 51-mile leg between San Francisco and San Jose?
In terms of the investment for high-speed improvements in that quarter?
Right. How much that would cost?
We're looking at, if I'm not mistaken, we're in the $4 billion range right now.
$4 billion?
Yeah.
And then, you know, I was on the committee a number of years ago, when this first started, and it started out that the high-speed rail trains would go 125 miles per hour, except for around the 85 mile-hour curve in Brisbane, which doesn't matter what kind of train you have, it's still going to be 85 miles per hour. But now you're down to 110. But back then, it says if you electrify Caltrain, it's 115 miles per hour. Not a big differential.
Yeah. The expectation is that blended service, six Caltrain commuter trains, six electrified Caltrain commuter trains per hour per direction, and four high-speed trains per hour per direction at peak, can operate in a blended configuration at 110 miles an hour. As you know, there are 42 at-grade crossings from San Francisco to San Jose, and while some of those will get grade-separated over time, the lion's share of them will still be at-grade. The Federal Railroad Administration doesn't require you to grade-separate those crossings until you get to 125 miles an hour. In the meantime, as Will pointed out, we'll be investing in four quadrant gates at all those crossings, and working with Caltrain to complete their fencing program along the entirety of the Caltrain commuter corridor, to try and minimize access to the rail corridor as much as possible, trying to improve safety.
We have $4 billion for one stop between San Francisco and San Jose, and so...
Well, the investments are very different in the Caltrain corridor than they are for the San Jose to Merced portion of the section, for example, Council member. We're investing in station improvements, initially at Fourth and King, assuming that the downtown extension tunnel isn't completed by the time we begin revenue service. Investments in Millbrae for the connection to San Francisco International Airport, significant investments at the Deirdre Don Station in San Jose. That's going to be a very large multimodal station along the lines of the Transbay Transit Center. There will be some physical... There will be some physical improvements to the existing Caltrain alignment, to straighten some curves and improve the condition of the railway to accommodate those faster speeds from 79 miles an hour to 110 miles an hour. Whereas from San Jose to Merced, which is roughly a $7 billion investment, you will have significant aerial guideway in sections from San Jose to Gilroy to the Pacheco Pass. You'll have a 13-and-a-half-mile tunnel through the Pacheco Pass along Highway 152. So those are much larger investments, and a separate guideway for high-speed rail. It won't be blended with any other local services from San Jose to Merced.
Yeah, how many miles is that?
84 miles from San Jose to Merced, and then the 51-mile corridor, roughly 123-mile corridor from San Francisco to Merced.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
Questions?
I do have a question. You talked about with the rail yard in, or the possibility of the light maintenance yard in Brisbane, that the trains would go over the existing track. So what kind of height from current grade would you be anticipating for the trains?
Yeah, it's about 25, 30 feet, just literally clear. Well, it would likely be in the 30-foot range, because the electrified Caltrain corridor with the new overhead catenary poles to electrify the line, the top end of those are 27 feet. So we'd have to go over those wires to get into the yard, so probably 30 feet.
Okay. And is it anticipated that the line would stay at the current grade?
Yes. Yeah. The whole point of blended service is to accommodate the operation of high-speed rail within the confines of the existing Caltrain corridor on the existing rails. As Will pointed out, the only places where we're considering any modification to the rail line would be in those areas where, in that specific area, where we would consider the possibility of passing tracks. But we're also working very hard with our Caltrain partners to look at the possibility of operating blended service without passing tracks, to use the operation of the system of the trains. There are two ways you can get at service. You can modify it operationally, or you can modify it from an infrastructure standpoint. And we're looking at both. But the lion's share of the alignment will remain as is.
Okay. And you had mentioned that Brisbane, if the rail yard was located on the west side, would need to have a new bridge. Are you talking about our current roadway bridge would have to be modified?
At Tunnel Avenue. So we'd have to work with the city to modify that in a way that works for the city, and we acknowledge that that's a gateway into Brisbane, so we want to ensure that we continue to accommodate that.
And if the rail yard is, the maintenance yard is located on the eastern portion of the site, that would not be needed?
Yeah, it happens in either case.
Okay. It just looked like from the presentation that it was only on one side.
Yeah, no, it would have to be modified in either case.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So just to add on to that, so the modification to the Tunnel Avenue Bridge would only be required if the rail yard is in Brisbane, not just with the high-speed?
No, 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 only if there's a maintenance facility here. That's right.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. You know, in regards to the grade, so you've been out to the site, and you see in the east side, there's a lot of piles of dirt. That'd be difficult for a rail yard to be on something like that course. You know, so that site has not been remediated yet. Title 27 landfill closure needs to happen. Would high-speed rail be responsible for doing that?
That's part of the environmental evaluation we're doing. If that location was the superior site, we'd certainly have to address all of those existing issues.
Okay. So same thing with the west side? You would do remediation for whatever standard for that particular use?
Yes, sir. And all of that would be evaluated within the confines of the environmental document.
Okay. Now, you talked about the amount of acres that's needed, 105 for the east side, 95 for the west side. Not too long ago, you said you needed a smaller footprint. Why all of a sudden?
It's not all of a sudden. The initial analysis was incorrect.
40 acres?
Yeah, it's not more complicated than that. It was, the number was wrong. It's 195 is the accurate number.
Okay. So 40 was an inaccurate?
That's correct.
Miscalculation?
Yes.
Okay. You know, you talked about funding cap and trade. Have those funds become more healthy than what they were before? Because that was quite a significant disappointment.
Yeah, you're correct, council member. The auctions have been weaker than they were initially. The governor and the legislature are moving to act over the coming months to extend the cap and trade program. The legislature has, is moving a bill forward to extend the program to 2050. Assuming they're successful at that, the extension, that extension will stabilize the program. We expect to see the auctions, as they move forward, return to those higher levels because of the competency in the program and the understanding that, not just for high-speed rail, but for other programs that count on those greenhouse gas-reducing funds, will be able to count on those monies as one element. Secondly, by extending the program to 2050, that also, from a financing standpoint, allows us to bond against those revenues, the 25% of which are committed to high-speed rail, for that near-term investment in the development of the program.
Okay. And the rail yard in Gilroy, that's still?
That's still very much in play. Yes.
It will happen, or it's?
Well, we're still, we're analyzing that site as a component of the program. Our expectation in looking at the overall program is that we will likely need both.
Okay. So, you know, I know that it would be preferred to have the station, I mean, the rail yard in Brisbane because of the proximity to San Francisco. If the rail yard in Brisbane didn't happen, you know, how significant to the overall operation would it be if the site was in Gilroy only?
It's very significant, because as Will mentioned, you would then have substantial operational challenges, getting effectively empty trains from Gilroy to San Francisco on a daily basis to begin their day's operation. That has a significant maintenance and cost effect on a program, which is why you see maintenance facilities, as Will mentioned, nearest the terminus of any alignment.
All right. But it's not a necessity to have the rail yard in Brisbane?
Well, it's a necessity to have a rail yard as proximate to your terminus as you possibly can. As Will pointed out, of the sites that are available on a very built-out peninsula, Brisbane is a...
Okay.
An attractive site from that use.
All right. You know, when we've talked in the past, and we've brought up the issue of revenue loss to the city having a rail yard, there's not the generation of revenue. So what are some potential opportunities that the rail yard could bring financially to the city?
Well, there's nothing I can define at the moment, but as we've discussed, council member, and as we've talked to staff about, we want to work with the city and the city team to determine what benefits can be brought to the city, given the opportunity to develop a maintenance facility here. What resources is the city interested in? Whether we're talking about jointly developing the facility and associated improvements like park facilities, or some of the development opportunities that are being considered as part of baylands that may be appropriate adjacent to a facility like this, or some of the energy generation elements that were discussed earlier this evening. There's no limitation to the kinds of things we can consider. As we've discussed with staff, we just need to sit down and get a better understanding of what the city's priorities are, what the city's interests are, and find ways that we can combine those with the development of the maintenance facility.
Okay. So you talked about the potential, you know, use of solar, and some of the discussions have been about using part of the rail yard site for the solar farm. Is that, is that a potential? And if so, when do you think you could make a determination for all of us that that could be a possibility?
Well, I think...
If that's a use, that's...
Yeah. I think the conversation about any uses has to be separate from the environmental review that we're doing. We're moving forward with the environmental analysis that needs to focus on the operation of the system and the development of the system. As a separate matter, we can have a conversation about the kinds of uses that we, that can be developed in concert with what we're doing as a project. Nothing in our environmental review limits that conversation from moving forward as we get to a preferred alternative. So we've been talking with city staff. We want to continue that conversation as we move forward and try and work with you to identify what those uses might be. That would be a component of any facility that we put together.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. So to follow up on my colleague's question about the potential for, you know, synergy between the different uses, for example, energy generation. So can you explain what this facility or rail yard would look like? Would it be an indoor or outdoor facility? What kinds of impact would there be, like, on noise or?
Sure.
Light pollution, you know, to adjacent properties and to Brisbane?
The, it's important to remember, this is a completely electric train, and the facilities, as a result, would be significantly different from a traditional diesel rail yard. From a noise standpoint, because the trains moving in and around the yard, onto the line and off of the line, are at significantly slower speeds, there would be less noise generated by the actual operation of the trains themselves. Activities in the yard, you talk about light pollution and the like. As the design, as the yard is designed, we could address issues related to lighting the yard, activities in the yard, any noise associated with the yard, mitigating any noise that would be generated from the yard or the structures itself. In general, our expectation is that the yard would be outdoors, would be open air, but... Sorry? Well, there would be a building for the actual maintenance activity, but the trains largely would be stored outdoors. But that, those design elements are also something that we can work with the city and the community on as we get into that design phase, that we're not limited to an outcome. We're limited to activities that need to be provided on-site. How we do that has some wiggle room.
Okay. And so those impacts are being studied in your environmental review?
That's...
Is that being studied for both alternatives?
Yes.
Or just one?
Yes.
Okay. And when do you expect to select one alternative over the?
As I said, we're modifying our schedule. We are looking now toward the fall to arrive at a preliminary preferred alternative with a draft environmental document that will be available for public comment shortly thereafter. So our hope is by the end of this year, early 2018, for a draft environmental document.
Okay. And do you know, if you were to have a rail yard in Brisbane, what level of remediation would be required?
I don't, off the top of my head, but again, that's going to be identified within the confines of the document.
Okay. Okay. Excellent. Thank you for your, all that information. Any other questions? Addison?
I don't have any other questions, but I could stand to actually use a break now.
Okay.
And we're halfway through, so I think this might be a good time.
Good.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. So we will adjourn for a brief break. Thank you.
Nice to see you. That was a great presentation. Again.
Of course it's true. Don't tell her. He's been caught.
No, 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 just like-
No, no, he like went like this and all of a sudden he just- He glanced down.
It all went down. Yeah, yeah, there was anyone. How's it going? Have you been traveling? Not to interrupt you, but I saw you in the seventies at your brother's wedding. I was at the meal house and we ended up popping open a bottle of champagne after our BDW meeting. And she was going over the whole story of how your brother and her met when they were like 12 in Mexico. Just crazy, we could not believe it, we could not believe it. Then we wanted just a whole story about how they met, like the second time, the first time they met. And um, they whipped out the wedding album. And then we were like, well, where is Michelle? So we see your dress is like so sep- you know, floral, like brown floral with the hat, the long sleeves in like a hundred degree weather, an all outside wedding in Louisiana. I can't think of anything more horrible, but they looked beautiful. And it's like to see them both in like, at that time, it was so wonderful. It was amazing, it was so great. And I heard that story and I- It was like a movie. And Bob Zettmer was in there. That's what they said, and they were like, for a long time, unfortunately. And he used to coach me in soccer, so I saw him.
Alright, let's get this show on the road. It's about to get started.
Is it colorful maybe or is it something?
I don't think so. I don't know, Ingrid Padilla. Get ready.
No, these two are outside of the room.
Can I have more water? Sure. Alright, thank you. Yep, it's me.
Alright, let's get started again. If everyone could please take their seats. We're gonna get started now.
Hey, we're reconvening a meeting, thanks for paying attention.
Okay, so welcome back everyone. And we'll start back up and the next presentation is Joe DeValcourt from Green Belt Alliance.
Good evening. Um, I'll try and keep it brief, but I don't wanna talk too fast. Um, so I'm Joel DeValcourt, I'm a regional representative with Green Belt Alliance and manager of our endorsement program. Really appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. Um, for those of you who are unfamiliar with Green Belt Alliance, our organization addresses a single challenge, which is how the Bay Area handles growth. We ensure that the right development happens in the right places and that development doesn't happen where it doesn't belong. And we're also the champions for the places that make the Bay Area special. And for almost sixty years, Green Belt Alliance has worked with Bay Area residents to protect our natural and agricultural lands and help our cities and towns grow in ways that create great communities for everyone. And the best way to protect what makes the Bay Area special is to vigorously support both good growth and protections for our Green Belt lands. This holistic work is at the heart of solving the region's challenges. And one of the most important actions we can take in our communities is to use our limited land wisely to great neighborhoods that meet the needs of today as well as tomorrow. And that means creating inviting places to live with walkable transit-rich transportation choices. It means encouraging a mix of homes near jobs and amenities and taking advantage of transit as an asset. And in this particular case, it means remediating decades of contamination to improve the local environment, water quality, and access to parks and open space. And by growing smartly in this way, we also reduce pressure for sprawl development while reducing lengthy commutes and in the accompanying greenhouse gas emissions and air pollution they bring. And if we don't get growth right, this has significant impacts on a host of things that we all care about. And I'm gonna take a moment just to describe a little bit about one of the things about our Green Belt and the values that are in our Green Belt that are so important for our region. And Green Belt Alliance has been very busy analyzing the risks to our Green Belt as the region grows. About every five years, Green Belt Alliance releases our At Risk Report, which is the definitive research on the Bay Area's farms, ranches, and natural areas at risk of being lost forever to sprawl development. At Risk is a tool to help decision-makers like yourselves prevent sprawl development, preserve the values of our Green Belt, like fresh food and clean water, and support the right development in the right places. The report is based on a comprehensive review of all of the Bay Area's city and county general plans and zoning and research on the status of development proposals across the region. And what's alarming is that today, over 293,000 acres of the Bay Area's Green Belt, which are the watersheds, wetlands, farms, valleys, and ranch lands, could be lost to development over the next generation. And this is an area almost ten times the size of San Francisco. And over the next ten years, an area of natural and agricultural lands that's about two times the size of San Francisco could be paved over. And these are lands we call high-risk. As you can see in this map, nearly all of the high-risk lands are on the fringes of the Bay Area. As people struggle to afford homes here in San Mateo and throughout the inner bay, there is increased pressure for auto-dependent sprawl development at the farthest edges of the region. These are places further and further from jobs and in many cases, far away from family and community networks. This in turn increases the number of people commuting by car, adding to traffic and congestion, and undermining our efforts to curb greenhouse gas emissions and air pollution. And these threatened lands also provide natural value for water, for wildlife, for growing fresh food. And these values are also taking shape in economic terms. And as a snapshot in terms of fresh food, the Bay Area has 2.3 million acres of agricultural land powering a $6.1 billion agricultural economy. 1.8 million acres of the region's land, watersheds and wetlands help to catch clean and store water, and 2.5 million acres are important for wildlife. And the Bay Area also has 1,600 miles of trails, which is a huge amount, and includes planned trails that will someday connect all nine counties of the region. And then one of those is the Bay Trail. And this project will help to fund the closure of some of the gaps there. And since our last report in 2012, much progress has been made by local campaigns to protect these lands from development. And Green Belt Alliance and our partners throughout the region have fought hard to reduce the risks to these important natural and agricultural lands. But one of the other essential components to protecting these lands is getting growth right, especially creating more new homes within our existing towns and cities to relieve pressure that sprawl would create on natural areas, farms, and grazing land. And this is just one of the reasons we need to grow smartly. And goodness knows, there's a great need for good growth in San Mateo. Brisbane is nestled alongside one of the busiest commuter corridors in the region that has some of the worst traffic in the nation. And much of that traffic is caused because members of our workforce can no longer find a home close to where they work and end up commuting from hours and hours to get to jobs in Silicon Valley and in San Francisco. And without enough homes for our growing workforce, the situation is getting worse, pushing folks further and further away from jobs, even into the Central Valley, and creating mega-commutes. I'm sure you've heard of them. This adds to the persistent growth pressure at the edge of the region and encourages more driving, more congestion, and worsening the quality of life for people in Brisbane and neighboring jurisdictions. Unfortunately, there's ample evidence that locating homes near transit helps to improve our traffic outlook. In fact, the Bay Area MTC recently found that people in the Bay Area who live and work within a half-mile of transit are ten times more likely to use it. And so in Brisbane, with Caltrain, Muni, and Samtrans providing significant transit service to this area within that half-mile walkable zone, there's a significant opportunity to capture these benefits immediately if there are homes that are built at this site. And so by focusing homes near high-quality transit, Brisbane will grow sustainably, filling the sustainability framework for the city, enhancing the quality of life for folks across the income spectrum, and will meaningfully contribute to tackling the affordability crisis that's grappling people in the Bay Area. And so we think Brisbane has an exciting opportunity here with the Brisbane Baylands. And the good news is that we can look to many other examples of communities embracing good-growth decisions around the region as a template. Let's take one example down the road in San Mateo. The Bay Meadows community transform a shuttered racetrack to create a thriving, walkable, transit-served community with new homes, shops, jobs, and parks. The city's decision to approve Bay Meadows had a real positive impact on the lives of San Mateo County residents, folks like Hormit and Kunal and their dog Chester. And because Bay Meadows was approved, they have a home where they can be a part of a community that they love. They love the parks and open space, they love to walk to Caltrain, and they cherish living close to their neighborhood amenities, and in their own words, they've said, "It's perfect." Maybe not perfect for everyone, but it's perfect for them and they've had a wonderful family life there. And so for their family and many more, Bay Meadows is a healthy, thriving, and successful addition to San Mateo City and County. It's part of the fabric of San Mateo and demonstrates what can happen when a community works together to positively shape how we grow. And so now is the time to build on these successful models that have been both pursued in San Mateo as well as around the region and implement them in Brisbane. It's also worth noting that while not everyone in San Mateo initially embraced the Bay Meadows concept, city leaders heard from a large cross-section of perspectives, from environmentalists to business leaders to those concerned about housing affordability, who all championed the project. And ultimately, the city council made the smart choice to support the project over a number of years. And now that Bay Meadows has come to fruition, the whole community is able to benefit from that decision. Brisbane Baylands will have even more open space, more walkable places, and will capture the excitement of living so close to San Francisco Bay. And this is why we are so excited to endorse the project. Since the 1980s, Green Belt Alliance has provided an independent validation of outstanding infill development. Our endorsements have helped improve more than 140 neighborhoods around the region and helped create the Bay Area into a one-of-a-kind place that we know it as. And Green Belt Alliance's endorsement program provides a unique and holistic project evaluation with our seven categories of criteria, and Brisbane Baylands excels in all of these categories. It features compact development with 4,434 homes, as well as shops, jobs, and parks, all close by to create living, walkable communities with transit that is buffered with existing neighborhoods. Fifteen percent of the homes will be affordable, and as proposed, this will create 665 affordable homes, a significant contribution to making sure that our communities are welcoming to people of all incomes. It'll create walkable and bikeable streets as well as trails, including significant investment in the Bay Trail. And it will also have strong transit connections throughout San Francisco and the peninsula with new opportunities for bus rapid transit in the future. As well as more than a third total open space with habitat and lagoon restoration with natural areas lining the lagoon that also serve as a buffer for the existing neighborhoods. And at its core, Brisbane Baylands will transform one of the largest brownfields in the entire Western United States into a vibrant place with homes, shops, and trails, all supported by energy and water efficiencies. And I will also note that my son is really excited that there is a roundhouse here because he is a big train aficionado. He would love to see that somehow come back to a place that people can visit. Among the many community environmental benefits, this will also include commitments to create good local jobs. And after more than a decade of engaging community leaders as well as decision-makers, it has shown a lot in the transformation of this plan. And so as one of the largest underdeveloped transit-rich sites in the entire bay, this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to make a smart choice about how we grow. And so Green Belt Alliance strongly believes that this project will enhance Brisbane's quality of life, enhance our environment, and strengthen our local economy. And so we strongly encourage you to support the project. I appreciate you taking the time and welcome any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Should get Chris Hart's phone number there, maybe he'll give your son a tour.
Oh, awesome.
How old is your son?
He's two and a half and completely train-obsessed, so I mean, maybe it'd be a little while till it happens. Exactly, he might still be obsessed with trains.
That's the age.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the next presentation is by Heather Buckley and Dan Siskind of the Candlestick Preservation Association.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for having us back to speak with you again. I'm Dan Siskind.
And I'm Heather Buckley, and we're representing the Candlestick Preservation Association. Uh, we are a group of windsurfers who actively use candlestick. Um, and we, oh, and there's a clicker, I see. We feel like even though many of us are not residents of the city of Brisbane, as windsurfers, we are members of the recreational user community of Candlestick, which sits on waterfront that is adjoining the Brisbane Baylands. And being a safe and family-friendly legal user group, we really feel that we contribute to the critical mass that maintains Candlestick as a safe recreational venue for Brisbane residents and residents of the surrounding area, particularly in an era where a lot of these parks have insufficient legal enforcement. And so having a critical mass of waterfront users who are creating a positive space for families benefits all of all the cities in the area.
And we should point out that there are windsurfers who are also residents of Brisbane.
Hold the microphone to you, Dan.
Yes, sorry about that. We should point out that there are also many of our windsurfing community who are residents of Brisbane, including some of the folks in the back of the room here today. We, uh, as our main thrust of our presentation and the main takeaway that we'd like you to have is that we'd like the city to adopt the planning commission's recommendations regarding the development of the Baylands. We feel that it was a very thoughtful process. Uh, they spent a lot of time and effort on their deliberations. Got a lot of input from the community, as the city council has as well. And we feel like they did a good job in developing recommendations that prioritize the best interests of the city over those of commercial developers.
One of the things that the commission recognized in the process of these deliberations was that the environmental impact report that was submitted by UPC was inadequately rigorous. Um, in particular, we want to point out and support the recommendation that was made in section three, number two F, that should the city council consider increasing the commission's recommended development intensity. Additional studies should be completed for the EIR before, prior to the city certifying it. Um, and that includes undertaking additional studies of impacts for, on future windsurfing resources adjacent to the Baylands, specifically including using computer modeling, which is, and is an industry best practice. And this very much echoes concerns that were raised by other community groups earlier this evening around many inadequacies that came out in this EIR that was not, was not done according to, according to standards.
And as members of the windsurfing community, we would welcome the opportunity to be involved in any future studies of the wind resource at Candlestick and how development would impact that. As, as the users, we're in a good position to be able to give feedback and suggestions on how those studies could be designed so as to be adequate and adequately reflect the impacts of the development on the wind resource at Candlestick.
Yeah, with that in mind, we feel that the city of Brisbane is responsible to all stakeholders, particularly to the residents of Brisbane, not to certify an inadequate EIR because that runs the risk of running into unintended consequences and leaving a negative legacy on the city. And this really is an opportunity for the city council to rather be leaving a very positive impact on the city. Um, and so we recommend that they be certifying only the minimum use case, the one to two million square feet of development that the city planning commission recommends, and not make changes to that allowed the development intensity without following a proper EIR that does meet the requiremency of CEQA.
And speaking, sorry, speaking of legacy, I think when you take a look at some of the inset images here and you see the development that surrounding communities have done, those are not the type of projects that will be a good legacy for the city council or a good legacy for the city of Brisbane. Uh, when you build high buildings near the waterfront, you block off waterfront access from all the community members, except for those who may work in the building that's right on the waterfront. You diminish the aesthetic of the community. Uh, so we would strongly recommend that any building be closer to the hill line, farther from the shoreline, and the heights be as low as possible. Uh, that would certainly impact the wind at Candlestick to a lesser extent than high buildings or buildings closer to the waterline, but it's also gonna be more of a benefit for the community. It's gonna leave, uh, one of the few places where the waterfront is clearly visible in this area open for all the residents of Brisbane, and it's gonna allow the community to enjoy that beauty.
And there are a number of examples around the country, and Chicago being a particularly good one, where you see that cities have taken a proactive approach to leaving buildings recessed from the shoreline and having public access park at the shoreline. Um, and in an area that has quite a bit of tourism, many people come to the Bay Area over the course of the year to enjoy the beauty of the bay. And having Brisbane be a particular place that draws them is an opportunity that no longer exists for much of the shoreline of the bay, but is still available for Brisbane.
So, that brings us to the end of our presentation. We wanted to thank the council for the opportunity to be involved in this process. Uh, thanks staff, particularly Ingrid Padilla, for being so accommodating and helpful in the process. And we look forward to hearing more about the council's deliberations and eventual decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Alright, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, next is Adina Levin from Friends of Caltrain.
Okay, somebody probably- Here we go. Okay, so, good evening, council members and staff and everyone who is still here and still awake. Um, so, Adina Levin, Friends of Caltrain. Friends of Caltrain is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We focus on encouraging the successful modernization of Caltrain in the context of increased use of sustainable transportation and transit-supported policies on the peninsula corridor from San Francisco through San Jose. And as, um, anyone, um, interesting. This is the January version of this presentation and not the May version of this presentation. So I do have some information that is similar than before and also some new information, which I will look up on my mobile device and talk about the new information in addition to the earlier information. And also, you know, go a little bit slower to, you know, talk about the things that were kind of glossed over in the very rapid public comment beforehand. Uh, we are really thrilled that the Caltrain electrification is moving forward, which will allow much better service for stations like Brisbane, which get really poor service today, and give the city and the region the opportunity to take advantage of this major transportation asset. It's really great that the community is very environmentally focused and wants to be sustainable. And this regional transit station is a key asset for the sustainability in our area. So what I wanted to talk about, you know, one of the main concerns is when you're doing development and infill development is traffic. So I wanted to talk about practices that are happening in our region to reduce traffic, reduce transportation impact, including things that this city can do to build on the proposals before you and do a better job of having less traffic. So in our area, we are familiar with some of these best practices. Originated in some of our major employers, but they're now getting democratized down into, you know, many of our communities for a much broader range of purposes. So we're familiar with Stanford, their pioneering efforts to reduce driving. It wasn't just Stanford's great idea and good intentions. This was the county of Santa Clara telling Stanford that they would be welcome to add new buildings and add more employees, but only if they didn't add any more new car trips. And after grumbling a bit, Stanford actually did. And over about a fifteen-year period, they reduced their drive-alone mode share from in the seventies percent, which is fairly typical around here, to under fifty. And with Caltrain, about a quarter of their transportation. And that does not include undergrads, it doesn't include grad students, that's adult employees. So, and they, and unlike Google, and unlike Facebook, and unlike Apple, they don't run their own long-distance private bus system. They rely on Caltrain and they rely on AC Transit and the public transit system for their long-distance transportation, and they run short-distance shuttles for some of their first and last mile. And the result and outcome is that they have grown their population of workers while reducing the number of cars. Um, they saved $100 million in parking structures they never needed to build. And they use the funding from the parking in order to be able to run their excellent shuttles and their excellent transportation programs. And over that time, their carbon emissions have gone absolutely down, not just relatively down per person. So what we're seeing in our area is a trend for cities to take charge and take what Stanford has done and democratize it and make it available to a much broader swath of the population. And we're seeing this in a number of different cities on the corridor. And I'll talk about several different examples that, you know, are available, working now, and can be learned. Um, so Joel from Green Belt talked about the Bay Meadows development and the San Mateo County, the San Mateo Rail Corridor Plan, which was passed in 2005, but the building started to go in after the last recession from Hayward Park to Hillsdale. They set a goal of twenty-five percent fewer trips than your typical suburban development. Um, this is a mixed-use development with commercial and residential and retail. Um, one of the concerns that is sometimes raised by community members and developers is to say, "Hey, Stanford-" that is sometimes raised by community members and developers is to say, hey, Stanford or Google is a major employer, they can do great transportation demand management and get rid of car trips, but if you have a multi-tenant development and a mixed-use development, how can you do this? In the San Mateo Rail Corridor Plan, they do that. They have multi-tenant, they have mixed-use. Each project has to submit a trip reduction plan and TDM, but it's not aspirational. It's not, it wouldn't just be great if we did it. They are required to do it, and they have reporting that is monitored by the city and is reported to the city's planning commission and city council on an annual basis. And so far, they have had 100% compliance to date. The other distinctive thing is that because the transit facilities in that area were expected to improve over time with Caltrain electrification as it's now moving forward, an improved Hillsdale station, they set lower goals initially, and then those goals are going to step up once Caltrain electrification and that station move kicks in. And that performance is going to be reported on an ongoing basis. So this spreadsheet is the world's most boring revolutionary document because this is showing the, the trips that these different developments are allowed to generate and what they actually are generating, and, you know, showing to the city council and the planning commission about the compliance on an, on an annual basis. So we don't need to believe the developer, we can measure. And the other thing that's, that's really great that they do, one of the things that people say is, well, hey, can we have penalties? And in fact, you know, Facebook and Menlo Park does have penalties if they have too many cars parked. But what they do, they, they do eventually have penalties. But if you are not in compliance, then you start off with a set of measures, starting with easy to harder ones. And if you are not in compliance, well, you need to invest a little bit more and do some harder things. And you have several rounds to improve before penalties kick in. So the goal is to have, the, the goal is to achieve the goals and not to simply penalize if someone starts out non-achieving. The next example I'll give is Palo Alto's Transportation Management Association in their downtown, where city council has given a goal of a 30% car trip reduction. They already have a 45% non-drive alone rate. So one of the things that they did drawing from that Stanford playbook, Stanford has great data. They analyze and measure where their employees are coming from and going to and understanding their barriers to getting out of cars, and then developing programs. So when somebody says, hey, I need a car because I might need to go home in the middle of the day with a sick kid, you have a guaranteed ride home. I need a car, I need to drive my car to work because I need to go out in the middle of the day to go to the dentist. You have a zip car on site. So you understand the barriers. And so what Palo Alto has done is they've done a random sample scientific survey of the 10,000 workers downtown to assess their commute patterns, mode share, what their barriers are. I don't, I, I strongly recommend actually looking at their report. It's really educational in terms of the level of detail that they have. And based on that data, they've started to run pilot programs to get people out of cars. So one of the things that they learned is that their tech workers drive less than 30%, but the service workers, people in restaurant and retail, drive more like 80%. And we have the stereotype that a lower-income worker is going to take the bus and a more affluent worker is going to take Caltrain. What, you know, because they like it or because they wouldn't, they don't live near the, they actually found out that they had a good number of the service workers that do live near Caltrain but are priced out. So they have a pilot program with 100 transit passes, most of them are Caltrain, and they are using them and really like this pilot program. They have a scoop carpool pilot, and they have a pilot with Lyft getting to and from the, the first mile to the transit. And watch in the next few weeks as Palo Alto does their budget, because it looks like what they're going to do is to take the price of their worker parking permits, increase that and use that to help give stable funding to that Transportation Management Association. So that makes the price of parking and the price of transit and other options more comparable, and it allows them to scale up these programs to pull people out of cars. Next case study here is Mountain View in North Bay Shore, where they're, they set a goal of 45% single occupant driving and a certain amount of car trips that they're allowed in and out of their small number of inbound areas. And the businesses there, including Google, are not allowed to add new buildings if they are over their trip limits. And one of the things that they realized was that both for their environmental goals and also their community goals for social sustainability, they're updating their plan to add housing. One of the things that they have realized, which is something that's coming up again and again, as we're starting to see this pattern in a variety of communities, is that adding housing and services near jobs will reduce the vehicle miles traveled per person. The other thought process that they went through in terms of thinking about, well, how much housing to add near the offices, is that the experts recommending adding about 5,000 housing units, and this is an area that has very minimal housing now, to support robust services. So you don't have people, you know, having to drive far away to have services. They want to have a car-like community. This is a discussion that is ongoing, and so the final decision about how much housing to add is still up to the city council. But what they're finding is consistent that, as what we're finding in other areas, that adding housing and services near jobs reduces driving. Similarly, in Menlo Park, where the general plan focused on the area near Facebook. And after a lot of discussion, they started out saying, hey, we want to upgrade our office park and be, you know, continue to be a great commercial center. And they realized that in order for that commercial center to be the most economically viable, it would actually be helpful to create a live-work-play area. And the city approved up to 5,500 units of housing, 4,500 newly allowed to have that live-work-play neighborhood. And once again, this is what we're starting to see consistently, is that when you add the housing and services near the jobs, you see less driving per person, pretty significantly in the Menlo Park general plan. Which brings us to the, you know, what can be done here in the Brisbane Baylands. And the current draft has pretty weak goals for car trips. It's expecting 80% a driving rate, and it is possible to do better, as you can see from these different case studies. And I would encourage you to draw on these other examples and do a follow-on transportation plan for significantly less driving. And as the EIR showed, the version with housing did have significantly less car trips and less greenhouse gas emissions. So as a strategy to reduce that driving and reduce that greenhouse gas pollution, housing is a pretty clear strategy that we're seeing in a number of different communities. Speaking of which, I wanted to take just a couple of remaining minutes to talk about. The EIR for the Brisbane Baylands is one of the last generation of environmental impact reports using the previous California Environmental Quality Act standard for measuring transportation impact, which is level of service, which the reason why that is obsolete and the new rules to replace this are about to come out and be absolutely required a couple of years from now, is because the state realized that when you use LOS, what that tends to encourage, it discourages infill development, because when you have things closer together, it's slower to drive, but you also have to drive less. And it also encourages, when you have a, a low level of service, you widen and widen your roads, and that makes walking and biking less safe and attractive. So you think that when you're using LOS, well, you know, I can widen my road, I can drive faster. But if I drive fa, when you widen your road and you can drive faster, more people drive, you get more congestion back, and then you need to widen again. And it's a treadmill that we haven't gotten off yet. And so that change is designed to really get us off of that treadmill of expanding our roadways and having a car-centric place. So here's a couple of slides showing that, the problem with the sprawl paradigm, where if you're trying to reduce congestion, you put things further apart, you wind up needing many more car trips and driving more miles to get to where you're going. And if you put things closer together, you might drive slower, but you can also get to more of what you're trying to get, get to more conveniently. And the outcome of having that infill development with things closer together, less driving, less vehicle miles, less greenhouse gas emissions. So I think I just talked through that on the California Environmental Quality Impact. So what can be done here in Brisbane? Set a mode share goal and a trip cap, require that monitoring and reporting, do analysis of what transportation requirements will be needed, not just to widen the roads, but to get people out of cars, and assess how to fund that using a Nexus Study using the new rules. I'm going to a workshop tomorrow, and I'll be learning a little bit more about how those new rules will be put into practice. Those new rules are going to be in practice long before this development in whatever form will be built. So would encourage this city to look to that direction on how things are going in the future. And last but not at all least, the housing near jobs and services reduces the car, car trips as an important strategy for our, our social needs, like jobs, housing, imbalance, housing affordability, as well as environment and sustainable transportation. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Adina. Questions?
No, I don't have any.
Questions?
You know, I just have just a quick comment. Adina, you know, thank you for the presentation. It was, it was very, very complete and, you know, shows, you know, that you can think outside the box and, and have a situation that maybe you feel that there's nowhere to go, you know, like the Stanford example. I, I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, Adina, you know, she, she goes to all of the CCAG meetings and Calmod meetings and, you know, really provides great input there. And she, she came to Brisbane a couple of months ago, because I had invited her to evaluate our Crocker Park Trail, to, to, you know, just see what she thought, if it was worthy of, of meeting the criteria for the OBAG II grant. And went all the way around the trail, and she went back to the meeting, and she, she spoke in public comment during that, that, that meeting, and was quite influential in convincing the other CCAG board members to, to move forward with funding the $850,000 that the city of Brisbane will receive to upgrade our Crocker Park Trail, you know, to be more commuter-friendly. So I want to thank you, Adina, for, for doing that.
I'm sure. I was happy to help out. I happened to have been in San Bruno for a community meeting about some transit-oriented development there, considering I, I got this call from council member Lentz. He said, can you recommend our project? I said, I apologize, but I'm really familiar with a lot of the other projects in the bike plan. I've never been there. I can't do that without having been there. And so I got a tour, and it's like, yes, it does all the different things that Brisbane says it's going to do. So I was able to recommend it and glad the project got funded.
That's great. Well, thank you for letting us know about that, because, you know, we don't know all the behind the scenes. You know, when grant funding comes, we're always grateful, but, you know, it shows that it takes hard work. And thank you to you, Cliff, also, for having the foresight to invite her to come to that CCAG meeting. So glad it worked.
Sure. And this, this may be a difficult and unpopular thing to share, but one of the things that's being discussed at the Plan Bay Area level is whether, in an effort to deal with our region's housing crisis, whether to make more funding contingent on housing. And so that's something to, you know, look closely and work closely with, with MTC at, because right now, with this city working on meeting its obligations with the kind of current state of the city, it's in good shape to qualify for that kind of project. But the transportation needs for this overall project will be greater. And given the direction where Plan Bay Area may be going, that adds a risk if the jobs get too far ahead of the housing in terms of the needed transportation, too.
Good point. So I have a question for you. So you mentioned, well, first of all, thank you for the presentation. And, and I took a lot of notes on the, the projects that you mentioned in other cities like Menlo Park and Palo Alto and San Mateo and Mountain View. And I'm hoping, I'm planning, I'm already thinking about which council members I know in those cities and planning to contact them to find out more about those projects. And I encourage my colleagues to do the same. And you mentioned, and I heard, I was at a CCAG meeting where they talked about Scoop. Can you talk about what that is? You said that they're doing that in Palo Alto.
Yeah, sure. And by, by the way, if you have specific questions and want specific references, I'll be happy to forward them to you about any of those that I mentioned. And Scoop is a new startup company that does carpool matching. And they've been very active in signing up customers. They have a big Stanford Research Park pilot. They have some pilots in the East Bay, and they have one that is being quite successful in the city of San Mateo. So they offer a, a discount and they, they have, you know, one of the things that's really inconvenient with carpooling is, well, how do I know who in this area is, you know, going to the same location as me in the same time? So they have an app that makes that really easy.
Okay. So sort of like Lyft or Uber, but for commuting purposes, where you're picking up people who are driving to work along the same transportation lines.
Right. It's much more of a pure carpooling. Lyft and Uber have become much more like taxi services and people, it's not really designed for a 20-mile commute, and Scoop is more used for the longer distance commutes.
Okay. Yeah, that's an interesting app. I'm, I'm very interested to see where that goes. So thank you for the presentation. Great.
Thanks, Gina.
Okay. We have two more presentations. Next is Victoria Fierce with Yimby Party. If I got that right. Yimby standing for yes in my backyard, I believe.
If you push F11, it should make the whole thing full screen real quick.
Yeah, perfect.
Cool. Yeah. Hi, I'm Victoria Fierce, and I'm here with the Yimby Party. I want to thank the commission real quick for allowing us to be here tonight. And tonight, I'm going to be talking about the Brisbane Baylands. And in particular, I'm going to go over these topics here. So first, quick overview of what I'm going to talk about tonight is with the Yimby Party, what we are, who we are, what we represent, the defense of housing. I'm here to defend housing. And why build here at the Brisbane Baylands? Some regional cooperation to consider in making the decisions about this, and the consequences of denying housing if that were to be the option chosen. First, let me introduce myself, and let's talk about what the Yimby Party is. So we are a highly organized urbanist movement. We are well-connected to San Francisco Bay Area of Howard, in particular, the Planning Department of San Francisco and many cities all over the Bay Area. Mayor's Office, MTC, Oakland, Berkeley, all these cities all have land use controls and land use elements, and we're pretty influential in that group. We write letters, we show up to meetings, we exert political pressure, and we work to lift up pro-housing voices and counter the narrative that our housing shortage is an accident. So first, let's go on to the next thing, let's talk about defense of housing. But before we go into housing, let's talk about the jobs that are being created here. So living next to your job is a thing that a lot of people want, and it's generally pretty good for the environment, as you heard other people here tonight talk about. The Bayland Development's process proposes to create a large number of jobs here. Without housing on site, these people will be commuting in from basically anywhere they can afford to live. So if you look at this map on here, darker blues mean longer commute times. And this is in respect to the jobs in wherever people live. So it doesn't say all San Francisco jobs, it doesn't say all San Jose jobs, but generally where people live. But if we look at the way that economic development has happened in the area, a lot of this has been been jobs in the Silicon Valley, along the peninsula, in San Francisco, things like that. So if you look at this map here, you get these far-flung suburbs like Richmond, Hercules, Martinez, Vallejo, all these places, they drive far away. There's not a bus line, there's not a train line, except maybe Hercules in a few years that gets you to your job, wherever that may be. So these people, they're driving. That's a lot of time that they're spending away from their families, a lot of time away from their kids, time that they're focused on the road, trying to not smash into other cars, and these extra environmental impacts of thousands of people driving, millions of people even driving here. So far-flung suburbs, these really super dark blue spots on there, those are commute times upwards of 40 minutes. So the question is, how can Brisbane help this? This is a regional issue, people are commuting. What's Brisbane's role in helping people lower their commute times in Martinez? And I'll come back to that question later. But let's look at where people want to live. So this is a map of San Francisco and the area around Brisbane, and in particular, the Baylands. The Baylands are right there in blue, and this map here shows, it's from Rent Hub, it's an online website that shows where you can find places to rent. And the Brisbane Outlands is outlined in blue. The colors go from yellow to red to affect average rents. Red is the most expensive, yellow, not so much. So you can look at this. Some of the nearby rents around this area, they're some of the cheapest in San Francisco, excepting that one red spot, but for whatever reason, it's red. But around it, like if you look at downtown, if you zoom out on this map, downtown San Francisco is completely red. People want to have short commutes, meaning that next to jobs, people want to live next to jobs. New jobs means that people want to live there. New jobs without housing creates upward pressure on the rents nearby, in particular, in San Francisco, San Bruno, these neighborhoods around here. San Francisco does not need higher rents. I don't think there's any argument about that. In particular, the Bay Area does not need higher rents. So what this means is that people want to live next to their job. And clearly, this map's missing a lot of data, but for context, again, San Francisco is in downtown SF is entirely red, deep, deep, dark red, the highest rents around. People want to live next to their jobs. Bringing thousands of jobs to this location, the Brisbane Baylands, that means people are going to live right here, specifically right here. They're going to not have a long commute, they're going to live nearby. And if they can't live here, then where are they going to live? And that's a very excellent question, you see. So in 2015, California added 350,000 families, households in California. The other side of that is we only issued building permits in 2016 for about 100,000 of those, is according to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So over a quarter of a million people moved to California in 2015, but we only built about a third as many homes, meaning that more people competing over fewer housing options. So yeah, I really don't know where these people are going to live right now, but this is where Brisbane pays a role in this, because you will have people moving out here. So the point is, what's clear is that California is not keeping up with growth. I don't think Brisbane should really add to that problem. So the point about this is our housing scarcity is artificial. It's done by decades of people organizing against housing, for whatever reason, and if everybody organizes against housing, the result is we have no housing. So our housing scarcity is artificial. I propose a solution to this, and the solution is quite radical. You organize for housing. You build more housing. So why here at the Brisbane Baylands? That's an excellent question. Like I said, opposition to housing is a collective action problem. If you ask your neighbor if they think we need more housing, of course, they're going to say yes. Who would be against housing, really? Generally, people agree, we need more housing. You ask anybody, you ask your neighbor, your friend, your brother, your sister, whatever you have, they'll say, oh, yeah, absolutely, I think people should have a house. Everyone has a right to oppose housing. There's no problem with that. That's the democratic process. You can show up and say, I think this is a bad idea, and you can be heard, not necessarily listened to, but heard. And when everyone exercises the right to oppose housing, it's a collective action problem. When everybody says, I want housing, just not right here, the net result is housing is denied. It gets delayed, it gets blocked, gets stalled, whatever it is, the result is that housing does not get built in the end. So this is the thing I want to point out, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, which is in the United Nations, the UN built this, and the United States agreed to this. And it says, everyone has a right to a standard of living, et cetera, et cetera, in particular, housing. Housing is really important. Housing is a human right. So what can we do about that? Build more housing. Building housing is not a minority view in this day and age. It may have been a long time ago. You have smart growth proponents that say limited growth is good, but as the YIMBY Party is, we disagree with that position, because housing is a human right, and we should utilize every tool we have available to secure that for our people. So the YIMBY message resonates pretty strongly with a very broad base. At MacArthur Bart, up in Oakland, North Oakland, it's a neighborhood surrounded by a low-density, one- or two-story, single-family homes. This year, we got approved 22 stories, 400 homes, the largest development in the neighborhood in Temescal's history. Just a couple weeks ago, Home SF in San Francisco is an upzoning along some big corridors out in the western neighborhoods that have been untouched for decades. Strong support over a two-year legislative period, passed last month. It's been great. We're having a party tomorrow night, you're all invited. Election 2016, we activated hundreds and thousands of YIMBYs across the Bay Area. We got senators and assembly members elected, in particular, Scott Wiener, he is the YIMBY Senator in office right now, representing this area. We, YIMBYs helped him get elected. And as part of that, there's a big package of state legislation going right through to address some of these issues and work on housing. There's a big bundle of bills being built in the Congress, right near the Assembly and the Senate, that Governor Brown's been asking for, dying for, for years, and it's coming. Building housing's not a minority view. So going back to the overview, so I'll talk about regional cooperation and how that plays into this, and what Brisbane's role is. So here's a map of Brisbane. It's outlined in red, it's a little difficult to see, but I've got copies available. And the Brisbane Baylands, we're all familiar, is in the upper right corner up there. So note the poor infrastructure for this area, in particular, driving and commute times. If you look up the road through the Brisbane area, or the Baylands, there's only one road generally, and it connects to the highway at one place. So obviously, you're going to need something. And this is the interesting question. San Francisco's going to have to help out with this. So Brisbane's going to need San Francisco's help in developing the Baylands. You've got this road that crosses city lines, you're going to have to cooperate with them, it crosses county jurisdictions, there's a lot of political things going on here. So Brisbane's going to need San Francisco's help in developing this, no matter what it is, offices, jobs, housing, whatever it is, you're going to need collaboration. If approval isn't what SF likes, what San Francisco likes, what's good for the Bay Area, Brisbane can't really count on help for that, and that's going to be a little difficult. This reality isn't confined to a couple of bureaucrats. I'm not a bureaucrat. I'm a local citizen from Oakland. My job is this. I show up, I don't play, excuse me, I'm not elected, I'm not in office, I'm not a bureaucrat, I'm an organizer. So the reality isn't confined to a few bureaucrats, it's known by an active, influential citizen group called the YIMBY Party. So let's look at this particular instance right here, the north end of the Bay Shore Baylands. Here, we've zoomed in on it, and we've got Tunnel Avenue and BD Avenue. Both are thoroughfares to access the 101 and to be able to cross jurisdictions. And you can also see over on the left side, there's the train stations and the transit stations that are kind of on city lines. So again, this idea of regional collaboration is going to be needed. So if you want to upgrade these roads, if you want to upgrade access to the 101, San Francisco's going to have to work with you on this. And again, if San Francisco doesn't like it, that's kind of a difficult thing. So having said that, let's talk about what happens about the consequences of denying housing. So there's a couple of consequences to think about this. There's the people involved, and then there's Brisbane. I'll talk about the people first. The consequences to not building housing that people undergo is that if development will create jobs, where are they going to live? They have to live somewhere. And thinking back to that map I showed about commute times, that's what Brisbane can do to help out with this. Brisbane can lower the commute times of people who want to work here by providing housing next to it. If housing's not added here, people will still want to work here. You're still going to have jobs, and they got to come from somewhere. They might live locally, they might live far away, but they're going to work here. You're going to have jobs, and that job money is going to go to paying for nice things that Brisbane wants. People here, working here, will compete for existing housing stock, raising rents, unless new housing stock is created. So I make the case that Brisbane has an opportunity to demonstrate regional leadership and take meaningful steps to address our housing shortage. Not fancy, fluffy, one-off things like signing onto the Paris Agreement, saying we're going to do things to solve housing, or whatever. This is actual, meaningful work that you can do to make Brisbane be the leader in the Bay Area of, we are doing something about housing, we care about housing, and we're serious about it. So speaking about Brisbane, let's talk about the consequences to not building housing for Brisbane. So this is a joint priority development area application that SF and Brisbane entered into on this location a long time ago. San Francisco can just pull out, there's no consequence to San Francisco. It's a huge blow to Brisbane's transportation funding prospects. That's something to think about when you're adding jobs that people need to go to. The road alignments, like I said, roads cross county and city lines, utilities, you've got all the whole works, anything about infrastructure, you're going to have to work with people on this. As other people said tonight, the Bay Shore Caltrain, the station straddles city lines, you're going to work on that, you're going to work with people. And finally, political capital. You've probably been familiar with the buses of YIMBYs showing up to these meetings. That's us. We can do that again, and we will keep doing it until we're done. So we have a lot of political capital, we're organized, and we show up. So what can Brisbane do? I think the answer is pretty simple. Legalize housing. I, on behalf of the YIMBY Party, YIMBY Action, the YIMBYs we represent, and the people who aren't even here yet and looking to live out here and move into these jobs, ask the Planning Commission and the City of Brisbane to include housing in the Brisbane development. Thank you. And available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do not, but thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much. Okay. And our last presentation is Corey Smith, on behalf of San Francisco Housing Action Coalition.
Y'all are doing the Lord's work here. So how's everybody doing? Corey Smith with the San Francisco Housing Action Coalition. We're made up of about 160 business members from around the Bay Area, the design and build community, then we have about 110 or so individual members that make up all of our membership. One of the things that we really discovered when we started to get involved in housing and talking to people around the entire Bay Area is frankly, a lot of people don't really know the ins and outs. As council members, you guys are obviously very, you know, acute to the regional issue, but the significant majority of people don't actually know that. So what we've done is we've put together a presentation that even taking out to some experts, people have been able to find it useful. And just to kind of reiterate what Victoria had just said, we are firmly in agreement with the fact that the Bay Area's housing and affordability crisis is really, really self-inflicted in a lot of ways. So we took some snapshots out of here just to kind of frame the conversation, so people can understand where we are coming from and why this is such an important issue, really for the entire region and then for the future of Bay Area and California residents. We'll talk about why it's important, we will emphasize and talk a little bit about supply and demand, some background about how we actually got here, some solutions, because we do think this thing is fixable, and then how hopefully we can collaborate with all of you to try to, you know, put out a product that your city is very, very proud of, the region can take pride in, and moving forward in perhaps a less confrontational, more kumbaya setting, which I think plenty of us would like. So not shocking to anybody, I think everybody knows the entire Bay Area is expensive, and that's why people pay attention to this issue, because quite simply, rents are high. I've probably mentioned this before, I live in a basement because that's where I can afford rent. I'm in a rent control unit, which means I can't move because I work for a nonprofit and can't afford anything else. This is reflected around the entire Bay Area. One of the things that that's really resulted in that's largely concerning is this idea of the missing middle, and people talk about that, but when you actually kind of dive into it, there's a lot of San Francisco and I think Bay Area values that people really, really risk losing if we don't build housing for folks. In San Francisco, it has very much become the haves and the have-nots, and that's really being reflected across the entire Bay Area. When we think about what the Bay Area, kind of this liberal, you know, utopia exists, we value a number of different things. We value racial diversity, we value socioeconomic diversity, and we value cultural diversity. San Francisco is becoming a city of rich, white people. That is the result of the region not building housing, and that is something that is really, really concerning, kind of deep in the core for a lot of us, but it's been a byproduct of what we have done. So in order for us to really adequately address that missing middle and actually achieve that socioeconomic environment that we claim that we want, we've got to do something about it. One of the other things that's really important for folks to understand is that high-density urban infill housing is the most environmentally friendly way to build cities of the future. This is a per capita carbon footprint map done by the UC Berkeley, and not shocking, I think, to most people, dense urban cores per capita have a smaller carbon footprint than rural or suburban communities. One thing in doing this research that I found absolutely fascinating is people that live in cities actually take shorter showers than people that live in suburban or rural communities, and it's actually about 70% shorter. And I'm trying to kind of encapsulate why this would happen, but it sort of makes sense. If you live in a city, multifamily housing, all of a sudden, your home's probably going to be a little bit smaller than a suburban two-story house. And if your house is a little bit smaller, your shower's probably a little bit smaller as well, and your lifestyle just kind of naturally picks up. Now, we're not going to solve one of our climate change goals by shorter shower lengths, but it's one of the ways that we really are able to understand and kind of snapshot the environmental challenges that we face as an entire region. And while we talk about wanting to, as previously mentioned, you know, hit our carbon emission goals, and we're going to follow through on the Paris Agreement, talk is cheap, and unless you actually do something about it, we're not really getting any better. It goes back to this. People often argue all over whether or not supply and demand exists, what the actual impact is. We'll be the first to acknowledge, we are so far behind in this that we need to catch up from a big-picture, regional standpoint. The Bay Area as a whole has not produced the amount of housing that it has needed based on population increases. We'll get into a little bit on the jobs/housing balance on the next slide, but it is, again, completely intentional. We have had our housing production increase at a rate slower than population has increased. Other cities have done it differently. Seattle is commonly known as a city that produces a lot more housing than the city of San Francisco, and certainly the Bay Area as a whole. And people often talk about urbanists around the world, that if you really want good city planning, look at San Francisco, look at the Bay Area, and just do the exact opposite. We've become the joke of a lot of different people, and that's really had a number of different consequences. How did this happen? You know, many problems that exist are never in isolation. We've talked about consistent lack of supply. We'll completely acknowledge that if we were to decrease demand, that that would be another way to mitigate housing prices and the affordability crisis. We're big fans of the economy. Prop 13 is one of the number of things that has hampered our state's ability to generate revenue for services, roads, schools, fire department. So we need to figure out ways to continuously make money for the state, for the City of Brisbane, to be able to reinvest for their citizens. We've got state-level issues that are affecting everybody. Prop 13 and SEQA have both become tools for folks to oppose housing. We've got a regional coordination issue. I'm sure all of you are feeling this impact, where the entire region is very much looking at you going, what are you going to do about this? And because we don't really work well together, you know, you all do have an obligation to the citizens of Brisbane, absolutely recognizable. Do you have an obligation to the citizens of the Bay Area? Perhaps more questionable. But are you willing to say that you don't? That what happens outside of city limits is completely irrelevant, because what happens in San Francisco certainly impacts your city. And so we always try to encourage cities to be able to have quality communication, to be able to figure out, okay, how can we actually work together on this? Because we really are in it together. And then as a local level, I'm sure you have figured out by now, this stuff is really time-consuming, it's really expensive to do. Different proposals have come forward to you, and you've seen some different things. What is economically feasible is really, really driven by a number of different factors, and it's going to be expensive to do any piece of land, and so we have to be able to generate the returns to actually make something happen. This is a chart from the Wall Street Journal article. It is San Mateo, Santa Clara, and San Francisco County. You know, Victoria mentioned a little bit earlier about the jobs and housing statewide. According to the Bay Area Council, the Bay Area as a whole has produced 11 times the number of jobs as homes since 2000. So for every 11 jobs we bring here, we build one home for them. Each home in the Bay Area houses about 1.4 people. So it's not quite as, you know, one home for 11, okay, it's 1 times 1.4, but we're still drastically underproducing where the jobs exist. What has happened as a result is suburban sprawl. But I'll even take it one step further, it's actually Central Valley sprawl. The map on the left is population density changes since the beginning of the millennium, and you can see that kind of big glob in the upper right up there, that's Sacramento. Sacramento, Modesto, Merced, Stockton, that's where Bay Area employees are living. Google is running shuttle buses from Sacramento to their Silicon Valley office. That's a pretty horrible thing. You know, there's not a high-quality train system that exists for people to come from the Central Valley to the Bay Area core, so a lot of these people are driving in their cars. I think the environmental impact kind of speaks for itself with that. Out of curiosity, and I tried to figure this out, how many of you are parents, by any chance? Two? So if you were to live in the Central Valley, and you need to get to the Bay Area core for your job, and you start your job at 8:00 AM, you're leaving your house before 6:00, how are your kids getting to school? Lunch? Lunch? Out of the question. If you work until 5:00, you're not getting home until 7:00, 8:00 o'clock at night. Homework, dinner, soccer practice. I mean, all of it's out the window because we refuse to accept the fact that, okay, we need to be able to create the homes for people, to get those walkable communities, to get the transit infrastructure in place. And it's happening all over the region. Brisbane happens to be geographically located right next to San Francisco, and so it's become an issue for the people in our city, but by no means... And Deena can advocate, as you mentioned, she goes up and down the entire corridor talking to all these communities going, hey, this is something that needs to be prioritized because it is quite literally killing our state. We're also seeing, by all projections, that the state of California is going to increase by a population the size of the city of San Jose every two years, and we're going to increase by a population equal to the size of the city of Los Angeles every eight years. So it's 2017 today. Between 2017 and 2025, the state needs to build another LA. We need to house that many people. So where are we going to do it? The process that we have set ourselves up with is really kind of killer. This is the SEQA process flowchart. I'm sure the parents, y'all are familiar with Chutes and Ladders, the game. The California development process is like Chutes and Ladders, but there's no ladders. Everything just kind of sends you back to the beginning. We go around continuously trying to talk to jurisdictions going, hey, we have to figure out a way to do this smarter. We have to be able to make this go faster. It shouldn't take years to get something simple done. Project the size of yours? Okay, it's certainly a different task than an 80-unit infill project in the middle of San Francisco. It does require more attention, more thoughtfulness, infrastructure improvements, not denying that. But by and large, the system is broken in the state, and we need to fix it. How do we fix it? Like you said, there's no one thing that we can do to figure out how to get out of this. We got into the situation over long periods of bad decision-making by voters, generally speaking, but there are a number of things that we can do to slowly chip away at this. The regional coordination issue is certainly key, and I really do want to emphasize, however San Francisco, however we can work together on this, I think we're going to be happier in the end. And then one of the things we always really try to emphasize with folks is gathering housing supporters and just trying to get people to partake in the process, because the more people that are involved, the more thoughtfulness that's added to the conversation. I think we're going to end up getting better results in the very end. A number of local-level solutions that we always talk about. ADU reform just passed through the state for the first time. We're really excited about it because it gives us the opportunity to actually add small, affordable-by-design is what we call units. Modular housing, micro housing, group housing, student housing, as many different options are available for people, we think that those are really good ideas. And then reforming the discretionary approval process. We really believe prioritizing long transit corridors and underutilized land. That's why the 684 acres to us is just like, this is such a good opportunity. We have to do this the right way. One of the other things I also really want to emphasize, according to the state of California, areas that see high rates of market-rate housing construction see less low-income displacement. I think kind of the simple theory is, is if you have one home and you have all of these market forces that are going to come after that, and you have good-paying jobs coming to the region, the person that's going to live in that home is going to be the richest person. That's how the world works. If we're able to provide alternative housing for folks, we'll be able to maintain some of that socioeconomic diversity that, again, some of us really, really do want to try to maintain going forward. So what does SFHAC do? At the end, we understand this entire process is political. You are the ones that are going to be making the decision-making either from this council or the voters itself. So we want to do what we can to make sure people are educated on the issues, that they understand what's going on, why this is so crucial, so people are participating in the political process to actually determine the political outcomes, which in this case is building housing. Little bit more about how we go about. For the record, we are fiscal... Green Belt Alliance is our fiscal sponsor. I was very happy to hear that they have seven criteria to judge development projects because we have eight criteria. You can see them on there. Land use density, affordability, parking and alternative transportation, historic preservation, urban design, environmental features, and community input. Our nonprofit is almost 20 years old. We've been doing this for a really long time. We've literally graded hundreds and hundreds of development projects, and then we always put those grades online. How our team came to a 1 to 5 score, what the comments are, and then we grade overall development projects. So we've got experience, and we've done a number of different projects, like I said, in San Francisco. The Brisbane Baylands was the first that we got involved with outside of San Francisco city limits, and then the Carmel Walnut Project out in Fremont is the second. We're going to continue to look at regional impact sites and figure out how our advocacy can be most useful in making sure that there is an adequate amount of housing to meet the demand that we have. And lastly, just kind of an ask of you. I mean, we have experience doing this. There are a number of different folks that are involved as members of our organization that worked on remediation plans, for example. David Umberg, who actually came down here maybe six months ago at this point in time to talk about remediation, and he had that conversation, is a member of our organization. So please, however we can be useful, whether it is with San Francisco city leaders, whether it is folks in the state legislature, whether it's our members, however we can be helpful in this situation, utilize us as a resource. We're here because we care, and everybody shows up to this. I don't think anybody's denying that, because it's important to everybody on both sides of this issue. So however we can be productive for the conversation, I mean, that's really what we want. And then always vote, just because you have to always plug. If people don't vote, then hey, what's the point to the entire thing? Thoughts, questions?
Thank you, Corey.
It's late.
Questions?
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone in the public, for bearing with us. We did a good job getting through all of those 10 presentations. And now, we are at the public comment period. Do you have a number... A few slips. If you'd like to speak, you can give a slip to our city clerk, Ingrid.
I didn't know we had public comments.
It's a public hearing, so we always have an opportunity for the public. So at this point, we'll call up in order David Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and honorable members of the council. I am David Smith with the law firm Steisenblock. We are counsel to the project proponent, Universal Paragon. Commend you. You've covered a lot of territory tonight and a lot to digest. I'm here tonight to speak exclusively, though, to the speculative, yes, speculative, high-speed rail component and their maintenance yard. Just three quick points. Our direct contact with high-speed rail, the fact that they are not subject to your local planning efforts, and the fact that you have a complete package before you. As Mr. Triposis noted, we had several discussions with the high-speed rail team, and those are ongoing. Specifically, we've expressed our policy and legal concerns with their unilateral inclusion of this privately-owned site in their public presentations prior to coordinating anything with us. Among other legal deficiencies is their failure to adequately identify and consider alternative sites for this facility, which is a core and essential requirement under both SEQA and NEPA. Given the uncertainty of funding at the federal level and cap-and-trade revenues, which they noted themselves, as well as the inevitable litigation over environmental analysis, as Mr. Triposis acknowledged, the schedule and ultimate construction of this segment is anything but certain and predictable. What is certain is that whatever this council decides is not and will not be binding on the authority. As this council knows, as a state authority, high-speed rail is not subject to the locally adopted planning and zoning provisions you are considering now. If and when this happens, the state will decide where, the state will decide how much, and the state will decide when, if ever. The fact is that you have a complete proposal and application before you based on real and defined circumstances and resources. Respectfully, honorable members of the council, your charge is to evaluate the merits of that proposal without being distracted and effectively paralyzed by speculative matters relating to what the state may or may not someday do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Danny Ames.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and it's late. I wanted to just reiterate the letter that I wrote back in March. I'm just going to read a bit of it. This is the "LA Keeps Building Near Freeways Even Though Living There Makes People Sick." Did you all see that article in its entirety? Did you go through it? Is this project going to include housing within 1,000 feet of 101? Can anybody answer this question on the council? For more than a decade, California air quality officials have warned against building homes within 500 feet to 1,000 feet of freeways, and with good reason. People there suffer higher rates of asthma, heart attacks, strokes, lung cancer, and long-term birth defects, and even more health risk. This is all in the article that I sent you guys in its entirety. I am in favor of the Planning Commission's findings for this project. I think that it's a good idea. We've been working on this for quite a long time, more than a decade, probably lots and lots of hours. I'm going to keep it short. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tony Berrios.
Mayor and City Council, thank you. My reaction is that while the focus of the housing advocates seems to be that Brisbane has outlawed or made housing illegal, which is not correct, although it has previously zoned the Baylands to not have housing. There's a lot of Brisbane where housing can still be built in the future. The Parkside Plan is an example of that, and while it was very difficult for you to work on that plan and take it to where it is now, my opinion, the long-term future of Brisbane could be very well-served by expanding that plan all the way through Crocker Park up Valley Drive. And that does not mean taking businesses out, because what Clark Conway pointed out was, we don't want to chase businesses and revenue away. We wouldn't have to do that. But if we created an opportunity to wisely transition over time, that could be a very good plan for the city and its growth, knitting two sides that are separate together and creating many of the exact same benefits that all these housing advocates are talking about, putting services, jobs, and resources all together so that you cut the traffic. I find a couple of things very troubling. One was, at a meeting we had, I guess it was a month or a few weeks ago, there was somebody here talking about... It was one of the experts talking about how to fill the lagoon, hard the lagoon in to make it nicer, put a nice little walking ramp out in the middle of it, because it looks good in a picture. But for most of us who have been looking at it for 20, 30, 40 years or more, it looks pretty good like it is right now. We just like it to be cleaned up. No toxic fish. It would be really nice if people could wade there, swim there, kayak there, what do you call it? Windsurf. That would all be fine. Fish wouldn't mind it. Birds probably wouldn't mind it. But the key is, what's good stewardship? And your land use decisions are going to dictate that for the future. When the Green Belt Alliance talks about being anti-sprawl, and I think the last gentleman up here was talking about anti-sprawl, what the heck do you think this project is if it's not sprawl? I can't figure out a better definition for it but sprawl. We have... We can't look at Brisbane as a solution to the region's problems in housing. San Francisco created all of that problem. San Francisco is the mother and father of that problem, because after the '50s, when they decided to take 75% of their landmass and zone it for single-family, where'd those people go? They went everywhere that that gentleman had on his map. And when Google decided to put their plant, and Apple put their plant down in Silicon Valley, instead of putting it out in Merced, or Stockton, or Tracy, or those other places where the land, the greatest farmland and ranchland in the world, was going under concrete and asphalt, were these people complaining about that? I didn't hear them. That's where those jobs should have gone, where those houses were going. I just drove through there last weekend. I don't know if you guys have, but there's thousands and thousands. I don't know how many homes are building over there, right on the Bart Line. It's good that they put them on the Bart Line. I'm all for that. I'm all for housing on the transit line. Guess what? Our developer, UPC, is building 1,600-plus right on the transit line, right across the county line. You could spit right across there. And they have a neighbor who's going to build another couple hundred right next to them, right next to the train line, on the old...
Slade?
No. It's next to the Slade Lock area, but it's the Western...
Hunter's Point?
No, the train company just sold a sliver of land there, right next to the Slade Lock building. Okay, there's going to be... So there's going to be over 1,800 units right there with all the other amenities, right on the train and transit lines. And that's great. I'm all for that. Well, then our developer, the... What, you call him the declarant or something? Applicant? They also own all of Executive Park in San Francisco, right next to Candlestick Park, and they have plans to build two, if I'm not mistaken, 24-story apartment towers there, and another whole huge community, which I don't know the total number of units. But when you take all of these things together, plus Bayview Hunter's Point, San Francisco has something like 20,000 or 25,000 units in the pipeline already today. That's not going to be built tomorrow, but they've built some of them already. And one of their biggest problems is figuring out how in the world they're going to build enough new bus lines to move people around that are going to want to be in those places. That's a serious problem. And people in San Francisco, where I own a house, my wife, are very concerned about the damage that those new bus lines are going to do to their neighborhoods. People in Brisbane are looking at how do we maintain the standard of living that we have now? We want people to have houses. Brisbane is not 100% built out on infill. There will be more houses built in Brisbane, and that other law that the gentleman said was just passed about the second units or in-law units, we're going to have a lot of those built. So we're going to have a lot of building right in Brisbane, and we can have a whole lot more, even if there's never a house built on the Baylands. And if the city council ever did decide to change the general plan and allow housing on the Baylands, the best way to do it wouldn't be the way it was proposed. It would be to do it like Hong Kong. You do it like Dubai. You do it like other cities that build very tall high-rises. And in one building, on one small spot, you can include every service, including retail, offices, hotels, and residential. So why do we have such a big problem with affordable housing? Because developers won't build it. They'll give you every excuse in the world why they can't build a studio apartment and make it affordable. But they'll commit to 10% or 15% or 20% supposedly affordable housing that requires generally subsidies in San Francisco to make it affordable. And to my way of thinking, it's ridiculous. So I think we have... You have huge challenges. You have huge opportunities. I'd like to know why these people who are so anti-sprawl want to bring sprawl to Brisbane, because that's what it's going to be. And since it's not my property and I don't have the billions of dollars to wave the magic wand, I can't turn it into Golden Gate Park West or Golden Gate Park Southwest. But I think that would be a far huger and higher use, a huger benefit to the whole area as the population continues to grow. That would really be something that you could be proud of and your grandchildren could be proud of, and everybody... I mean, who would take Central Park out of New York today? Only one of the billionaires who'd like to build all over it. And the same thing with Golden Gate Park. But if it was dirt now, it sure as heck wouldn't be a park. And I think you really ought to think very hard about that, because the examples that I've seen are not impressive. And when that one gentleman was talking about the Roundhouse and how he'd like to take his kid to see it someday after it's restored, well, I think he's dreaming. You know, I'm involved with that project, restoring the train with Chris Hart and a number of other people, and we would dearly love to see the Roundhouse working again, being not just preserved, which it hasn't been, but restored and working, including a museum, including a huge restaurant, or whatever it takes to make it sustainable. But we don't have anything to say about that because it's not ours. And in addition to that, the current plans, as I understand them, and I'd be happy to be corrected, are to turn it into basically a restaurant with a static display of our choo-choo. I don't know. But the fact of the matter is, you put a... But the fact of the matter is, you put a, you put a road around it, and you don't put any track in there, and it's toast. So thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you, Danny.
I don't have any other slips. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak on this topic? Okay.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any further questions from the council?
No, but I thought the presentations were great.
Very informative.
Yeah, people really, really cared about, you know, the items that were most important to them, and it seems like, you know, sustainability is the one thread that seems to tie all of the presentations together, and there's definitely different flavors and different ways of getting there, but, you know, which kind of ties into our speaker series that, yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to announce that. The next meeting is June 15th, where we'll have our speaker series. So that'll, we look forward to continuing the conversation on the Baylands. So thank you for all the people who came and spoke and all the people who came to listen.
You know, if I may, Madam Mayor, you know, in regards to that, that meeting on the 15th?
Yeah.
So I spoke with, or actually text messaging, I guess that's kind of speaking, you know, with Andrea Traver from, our consultant from Integral. Yes, thank you, Clay. Regarding the speakers, and she says that she's got some dynamite folks, some real leaders in the environmental and sustainability world coming for the speaker series. And then, you know, this morning I was listening to Forum, and Michael Krasny was interviewing this guy named Paul Hawken, and he is one of the co-authors of Natural Capitalism. You know, Hunter Lovins was in the presentation. You know, Bill Clinton has said that natural capitalism is one of the top five books ever written. And so let me just, he's going to, he's going to give a presentation at a bookstore in Mellow Park on June 21st. And so I'm going to go there and I'm going to invite all my council members, you want a carpool down to that meeting. You know, he's, he just, he's, he just wrote a book called Draw Down, and we're looking at science, you know, using data to actually try and reduce the impacts on global warming. Not just to say, hey, you know, we're, we've gone past that limit, we, there's nothing we can do. He is actually with, you know, scientists all across the world come up with this game plan, and one of the things that I'd like to do at that, that book signing thing is to try and invite him to come to Brisbane and maybe give a presentation besides the speaker series that we're already doing, so.
Great. Thank you. And I also wanted to, so we're moving on to mayor and council matters. We're talking about the city council's schedule. Wanted to announce that I'm also going to be holding a few more informal coffees, latte with lori is what I've called them, and I'm going to have the next set of them focus on the housing on the Baylands issue, and it's more of an informal way for people to talk with me about, you know, how they feel on both sides of the issue, and I really want to listen to what you have to say and understand your thinking and your viewpoint. So that, I'm going to send out some announcements, but I'm going to hold one during the week and one on the weekend so that people with both types of schedules can attend. The first one's going to be on Thursday, June 22nd, at 10:00 a.m. at Mad House Coffee. The second one will be on Sunday, June 25th, from 9:00 until probably about 11:00. I'll be available for two hours each time. So June 22nd at 10:00 a.m., June 25th at 9:00 a.m. So I look forward to talking and hearing from many of you then. So we have the city council's schedule. As Cliff mentioned, we have the speaker series coming up on June 15th, and then on June 19th is our next Baylands hearing where we'll be talking about the process for the deliberations process, process to discuss the process. So we don't intend at that point to get too much into the substance. It's more about talking about what, what the schedule will look like and what sort of conversations or, you know, whether we, people want more information, whether people want to have, whether people in the council want to have specific types of meetings on different topics, so, you know...
Well, staff's going to present the decision tree that the Senate committee's been going over.
Right, right.
That, that'd be kind of the purpose of the meeting.
Exactly.
And see if the council agrees with that, then we can adopt that and kind of go from there from that point, you know.
Exactly. So that is our schedule, and moving on to written communications, is there anything else?
Yeah, just one thing on the 15th, and you guys can verbal me if you want, I'll invite it, but I'm not going to be here on the 15th. I've got something that came up and I have to go out of town, so I'll be out of town all, all week. And I do have a subcommittee meeting that day, and I'm going to be phoning in from that from a remote city hall.
Okay.
And that's on the 15th, and I'll have to watch the meeting remotely.
I think that'll be okay.
But it's a speaker meeting.
Yeah.
It's not some, it's really for the community.
Right.
But I know that the subcommittee had set that up, so you guys want to boo me, you can because I hammered it. Sorry.
Well, it'll be available on television. So I agree. I don't think it's...
Life happens, Clark. Life happens.
Well, we'll go on. Okay. So anything else on the schedule? No? Okay. So then I want to acknowledge the written communications regarding the Brisbane Baylands project that have been received between May 23rd and today. So we received correspondence from the Facilities Commission for Child Care Partnership Council on June 7th, Scott Houston on June 6th, Evan Parker on June 6th, Kara Cox on June 6th, Stella Kraus on June 6th, Brian Culbertson, June 6th, Kenneth Allen on June 6th, Marlene Christalas, Mario Kovacev, Paul Krupka, Leanne Lee, and Richard Kenny, all of those on June 6th, and Tony Varios on May 25th. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.